All right, we're going to try this again. Good evening, it's October 10th, 2024. This is a committee of the whole workshop. Welcome. The whole of the workshop is dealing with the Midtown Official Plan Amendment. Workshop meetings allow for the education and training of the members of council and do not materially advance the business or decision-making of council. Delegations are not permitted at the workshop meetings, but the public are welcome to attend, and I know that many have logged on and will be watching over live stream. I understand. Madam Clerk, do we have any regrets?
There are no regrets tonight.
Okay. Mayor Burton has asked me to chair, he's under the weather. And I'll look to see if he has any comments to make, but we hope you feel better real soon. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In the interest of sparing any of you the COVID experience, I'm isolating. I know it's an old concept, anyway.
We do appreciate it.
I don't recommend it.
Are there any declarations of community interest? Seeing none. All right, tonight, discussion item 3.1 is the town-initiated official plan amendment, Midtown Oakville File 42.1559. And I'm going to look over to Director Charles. We look forward to the presentation tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that introduction and facilitating this council workshop. We are pleased to introduce council to the new official plan amendment for Midtown. Being a workshop, we know that council will not be making decisions, but we appreciate the discussion and, of course, council's questions. This has been in the works for a few months now. And as we've received the public's and council's feedback on the previous OPA versions, and we will take council through our presentation this evening that explains the new OPA as well as the mechanics for how we will facilitate development in Midtown over the coming decades. There is a fair amount to cover this evening in the presentation, but we will introduce some breaks so that council can ask questions as we go and not have to wait until the very end. With me this evening is Jeff Abma, Kirk Baker, and Sabell Moncurso, who have been instrumental in putting shape to this new OPA. We also have members of the consulting team with us who assisted us as we worked through this in the analysis, including Jamie Cook from Watson and Josh McLeod from Enberry Lion Consulting. When we had presented the previous versions of the OPA, we began with the end in mind. And I say that to note, we, from a planning perspective, needed a plan that would account for that future development whenever it should materialize. We were not driving towards a population, but we knew that we needed to account for that population should it ever materialize, knowing that there was going to be pressures over the next coming decades well beyond 2051. And I admit that I did not do a very good job of explaining why we had structured the OPAs that way. So we took a step back and we looked at restructuring the OPA. And what this new OPA does instead is it ends with a beginning in mind. And I say that to mean, we started with where our current in-effect policies are, which is to plan for a minimum population and jobs for Midtown. It established a plan that continues to allow us to plan for that minimum, but gives us future flexibility to leverage new development in exchange for community benefits. This is a plan for all of Midtown. It's, and the focus tonight is just on this OPA. The Midtown policies that we have currently do not have a maximum density, but we do have maximum heights. And we anticipated accommodating additional population and jobs beyond that minimum through using Section 37 bonus zoning originally. And we know that that is no longer able to be used, but we maintain that same philosophy. And this time, we will be using, or what we're recommending we use is a new-to-Oakville tool, a community planning permit system, which will allow us to leverage additional development for community benefits. And Sabell will get into that into a little bit. We continue to use that 20,000 minimum people and jobs by 2031. That came straight out of the growth plan at the time, as well as through the region's official plan. Since we first started down this journey several years ago, there have been a number of new things that we've had to consider and reconsider, not the least of which is a new provincial planning, provincial growth planning policy, provincial housing policy, evolving Ministry of Finance forecast, the downloading of regional planning responsibility, as well as changes to federal immigration policies. As council will recall, when we introduced the joint best planning estimates that we had worked through with Halton Region and the local municipalities, there was a projected population for Oakville of 442,000 people. By taking a deeper look into the factors that I just noted, that meant that it was going to take us even longer than we had anticipated to reach that population. So at this point, a more reasonable expectation for our forecast is 388,000 people and 190,000 jobs. And this has the effect also of turning down the quantum for Midtown correspondingly and making that just less than 30,000 people and jobs by 2051. This is a forecast. We know that it will be subject to future change. We're continuously revisiting these forecasts as we move forward in the next few decades. It's important to understand that because it will allow us to then also fine-tune our policies as we continue to move forward when it's required. And this analysis, we were able to do with the help of Watson. And that report will be provided as part of our staff report, which council will see at the end of this month. We also wanted to better understand what the immediate effect of ongoing real estate trends were, the lending market. And NBLC was able to help us understand what we could potentially see in new development over the coming years. And what it means is it will take us longer to achieve because of the way absorption rates have gone over the last number of years. So it will take us longer to achieve that minimum. And these analyses suggest that if we do plan for that minimum, we will have more flexibility in the future to accommodate more development, but in a way where we can incent the right form of development and leverage it for community benefits. The other pieces which have been influencing the new policies is ROPA 49, which reinforces Midtown as a strategic growth area. And it's also integral to the maintenance of the town's urban structure. Midtown continues to be our premier strategic growth area in the policies that we're presenting. The other factor, as I noted, is the new provincial planning statement, which our OPA will be required to conform to that. While the new PPS is an amalgamation of the previous provincial policy statement as well as the growth plan, it does still continue to state that the town's official plan is the most important vehicle for implementing the PPS and for achieving comprehensive, integrated, and long-term planning. Another factor that has influenced this OPA is the spill-flood-hazard study, which is being undertaken by Conservation Halton for the Lower Morrison Creek area. This is a large area, and Midtown is just part of that. It is a technical exercise that's being undertaken to develop policies and mapping of the hazard. The consultation process is ongoing. Town staff are part of that consultation. There is a public engagement session coming up towards the end of this month, on the 24th of October. And as that information from this study evolves, so too will our policies to reflect that. So as a result of the changes that we've made, this new OPA, while similar to our existing in-effect policies, also ensures that we are in a good position for future development. It leverages CPPS, as I noted, while continuing to provide for an urban complete community, where we are able to mix land uses, promote housing choice, integrate opportunities for employment. In establishing the use of a CPPS, the OPA policies can help to make development approvals more streamlined and efficient while still supporting our local priorities. We also focused on what those community amenities are needed to support this type of an urban community, such as a robust parks and open space system, as well as opportunities for schools. We are interested to hear council's feedback as we go through this presentation so that in the end, we can refine the policies and bring it back to you in January for the statutory public meeting. The reason of the time lag between now and then is because of the time required for our approval authority, who is the Minister of Municipal Affairs, to use that time for their commenting, to be able to provide that to us. So we do anticipate bringing back a statutory public, or bringing back the policies through a statutory public meeting at the end of January. So I hope that assists in providing some context. But before I do turn it over to Sabell, I will pause here if council has any immediate questions.
Counselor Elgar.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, the numbers I heard, the 388,000 and 190.6,000, has not been approved by council at all? Or what is currently approved by council for the growth?
Through you, Madam Chair. The numbers that we have been using, that was done through the analysis that we've completed with Watson, looking at a number of factors, as I noted, including the Ministry of Finance numbers and forecasting out that population to 2051. So that's where we get the 388,000 people and the 190,000 jobs.
So that has not been approved by council at all? Then what is council already approved to 2041? I just need clarification.
So, and through you, Madam Chair, in terms of an approval as the town or as Halton Council? Because the reason I ask for the clarity is, Minister of Municipal Affairs has, through the approval of, it was Bill 162, I believe, had put in place a population, which I believe was the minimum, at 350,000. So just under, 349,900, I believe, was the number that the Halton, that went through as part of the region's plan. That is important because the region's plan is now the town's plan. And what we have seen is the factors that are involved is when the town signed on for the housing pledge, which is the 33,000 units by 2031, as well as these other factors, what we're seeing is it's an accelerated growth forecast beyond that number, but not as aggressive as what we saw through the JBPEs. So as noted, the numbers fluctuate, they take time to understand. And that was the analysis that was completed by Watson.
So what you're saying is the 33,000 was an addition to what we already had at 349,900? Or was the 33,000 not included in 349,900?
Through you, Madam Chair. The housing pledge was not part of that approval, to our understanding, but it did form part of the JBPEs, which is why you see the discrepancy between those numbers.
Yeah, it's very confusing. So, no, so the 349,900, at the end of the day, includes the 33,000? It's just that we're advancing it from where it was going to be?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, it does not include that number.
Oh, so the 349,900 plus the 33,000, that should be added?
Correct. But if I may, through you, Madam Chair, the 349,900 was a population, whereas the 33,000 was units. So just to clarify, not to be mixing up population versus units.
Okay, because I guess I had a misunderstanding that the 33,000 units was not an addition to for any population numbers. So I appreciate your clarification. I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Elgar. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Is everyone able to hear me okay? Okay, wonderful. So a key objective of the official plan amendment is to guide community building in Midtown Oakville over the long term. So before we get into speaking about the OPA itself, I just wanted to talk about community building as a starting point. So when we build communities, it involves many elements and considerations that are noted here on the slide. We need to make sure that we have infrastructure in place, and transit, roads, and sidewalks, and trails, you know, to move people and goods across the municipality. We want to have parks and open spaces for people to be comfortable, recreate, recharge. We definitely need buildings. Buildings are where we live, work, play, recreate. We want to make sure we're protecting nature and enhancing it. We also want to celebrate our history, and we want to accommodate events around the year. So we need to think of all of these elements when we're planning for a community. And we have many tools we can use to build our communities, and these are noted on the slide. And what I wanted to focus on tonight is the official plan as a tool for community building and the community planning permit system. That's the focus for tonight's presentation. So in terms of the community planning permit system, this slide will probably be familiar to you, and it's just as a reminder. It is a tool that we use to streamline development, and it helps to build communities where we are essentially replacing the zoning bylaw with a community planning permit bylaw. And by doing so, we're able to streamline approvals and issue one permit by looking at one single bylaw through one single application by one single approval authority. And that's how we have that streamlined process. And when that approval authority is looking at that permit application, they have the opportunity to consider opportunities for variances. They look at criteria to determine whether those variances are appropriate. And they also have the ability to impose conditions on that approval. And those conditions can be before the approval, after the approval, and even can happen after the issuance of the development permit itself. So it's a little bit different than our current processes. You also will probably remember seeing a similar slide to this. In terms of implementing the community planning permit system, the Planning Act has four steps to its implementation. The first being adopting an official plan amendment, which enables the use of the tool. The second step is actually creating that community planning permit bylaw. And then once that bylaw is in place, then you have the ability to approve development permit applications. And following that approval, you're able to issue the development permit. Some of these steps can happen concurrently, like one and two could happen concurrently, as could three and four, but there are these four steps. And so with this amendment, we are at step one. We will establish the enabling policies to allow us to then go to the next step, which is to develop a community planning permit bylaw. So in terms of what's required in those enabling policies, again, you'll probably see some of this being pretty familiar from when I presented this information back in March. There are a number of themes that need to be addressed in our official plan amendment. And so what this table does is it identifies how the amendment has addressed these particular themes. So in terms of the location, the amendment allows for the town to consider using a community planning permit bylaw anywhere in the town, but right now, it's focused on Midtown. So it specifies that Midtown is a community planning permit area. In terms of the authority to approve development permits, the OPA allows council to make that decision in developing the actual community planning permit bylaw. And it can be a council decision, a staff decision, or a decision that's made by a committee. So those decisions will be happening once we establish the bylaw itself. In terms of the purpose, the OPA talks about general purpose for using a community planning permit system, which again is to really allow for that streamlined development approval. And there's also specific purposes in terms of the goals and objectives of Midtown as the first pilot area for using this system. The OPA also speaks to decision-making criteria, and it recognizes that there are a multitude of policies within the official plan that provide that kind of criteria, which would then be embedded in the bylaw itself. And similarly, it allows for a variety of conditions that can be imposed, again, at the time of the development application approval or following it. And so it allows for a whole range of different types of conditions that can be imposed. And also, it allows for the municipality to, when it comes to making an application, to ask for additional materials in terms of what would constitute a complete application. Right now, the regulation has a list of matters that would be required as part of a development permit application, and we can ask for additional ones. And so we've established that. The one thing we are not doing at this time is including the provisions that would allow the municipality to use inclusionary zoning. And the reason we're not able to do that at this time is because we need to first complete our housing needs assessment. And you'll hear next week, or you'll see in the October 15th staff report, we have started the work on creating that housing needs assessment. And once that work is completed, we'll be able to update the policies to enable the use of inclusionary zoning as well. So this last slide, again, may be familiar to you. It was part of a presentation Justine Giancola made for you back in April, which talked about the different things that we can achieve by using a community planning permit system. And so as we go through the balance of the presentation, I will refer back to these elements and show how the official plan amendment starts to enable us to be able to achieve these objectives through implementing the community planning permit bylaw, which would happen after the OPA itself is adopted. So before I move on, are there any questions in terms of this segment of the presentation?
Counselor Adams.
Thanks very much. Can you expand on the CPPS element around how it would, how the approvals would happen for granting additional rights with respect to height? Is it automatic, or does it require it to come to council? So if an applicant, say, wanted to change the design of their building to get to their maximum FSI, and they wanted to get to a height higher than the maximum in the OP, beyond 20 stories, for example, would it automatically get approved if they met the criteria of whatever it was? Or would it come to council for an approval?
So we will definitely talk about that in the second segment of this presentation. But specifically, on who is the approval authority to allow for that additional height? That's actually something that will be determined when we develop the bylaw. So right now, council is the approval authority for any development permit application. But when we go to write the bylaw, you can delegate that approval to staff or to a committee. And we'll make those decisions at the time we develop the bylaw itself to determine what types of applications warrant a council decision and what types of applications maybe warrant a staff or committee decision. So it's not yet concluded on that. That's what we'll be discussing when we actually prepare the bylaw.
Okay.
You now have the flexibility to make those decisions later.
Okay, and there's more information later in the presentation? I'll wait for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Counselor McNeese.
Yes, through you, Acting Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Just a few points of clarification. So your Slide 14 with the themes, I assume that's the criteria for us to meet Ontario Regulation 230, whatever it is?
Yes.
It's these categories, and we've addressed it appropriately here. So the minister will be happy and allow us to move to the next step?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. And you also mentioned with the official plan amendment and bylaw being able to happen concurrently, are we anxious to get going on the bylaws? Because I know that's really where, as Counselor Adams had some questions, I know that's where we're really going to get the meat on, on what are the benefits in exchange for height and density and things like that.
Yes. So my recommendation would be, let's adopt the OPA first so that we have all those parameters in place, and then move to the next step, which is actually establishing the bylaw. And as you probably know, that's the approach Burlington took as well, was get the OPA adopted, and now they're waiting for their approval. And we can work on developing the bylaw, for sure, as we continue the process. And I think it's that way you sort of have your framework in place to develop the bylaw and not have to do a lot of reworking.
Okay. And I believe you mentioned in your presentation that the OPA should be general enough to cover the whole town, not just Midtown. Should there be other areas we want to look at?
Yeah, absolutely. Like, it's basically a quick OPA that says now X area is a CPP area. So it's one, a quick amendment that would need to be done to establish another area for a future bylaw.
And, sorry, just one more question. Related to inclusionary zoning, do we, like, I know in the bylaw phase of the CPP, we may be able to require a certain percentage of affordable housing at a certain amount, you know, like Burlington got really specific to the dollar amount of a one-bedroom unit, what it should be. Are we envisioning, or do we need to wait and see the housing needs assessment, that inclusionary zoning will be a beneficial tool in this area? Or will CPP give us enough strength?
Well, we basically can embed the inclusionary zoning provisions in the CPP bylaw.
Okay.
So that's ideally what we would be doing through this process. But before we do that, we really need to have that housing needs assessment done and have a very good understanding of what provisions should be in that bylaw that would ensure that we still have viable development. Because having a high standard for affordable units, while, would be very nice. If no one's going to build, you get zero units. So that's what the real benefit of doing that housing needs assessment is being able to fully understand the implications of whatever provisions we want to put in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McNeese. I just had one clarification myself. Can you just, there is in the draft that you shared the word "may," not "shall," on the CPPS. And it's in a, the section, it popped out at a few of us as we were reading it. We went, "We understand that we want to enable a CPPS, and we're going to go through that process." But the choice in the word was "may," not "shall." Was there a reason for that?
I'm not exactly sure which policy you were speaking about, so can I take that back and provide you a response?
I would appreciate that. Thanks very much.
And certainly, like, if it makes sense to put in "shall," that's, we can do that as we move forward on the, for the final OPA.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Seeing no other questions, we're allowing you to continue.
Fabulous, thank you. Right, so now, we're going to move to actually speaking about the proposed amendment. And this will be a joint effort between Jeff Abma and myself. And the idea here is to, again, be able to explain what some of the policies are of the OP and of the OPA, and how they would be implemented through the community planning permit system. So as you've probably seen, the OPA has Midtown-specific policies. So the intention here is that we would be deleting and replacing Chapter 20 of the official plan, which is the Midtown chapter. And there are also some town-wide policies. And the reason why we've put some of these policies in the town-wide section is because they're not necessarily unique to Midtown. They're certainly going to be used in the Midtown context, but they're not unique to Midtown and could be applied on a town-wide basis. And so that's why you see that division. And we are also introducing a number of new schedules, as you can see on the slide. And also, just wanted to highlight, in terms of the contents of the OPA, you can see that there's quite a lot of effort put in around urban design and built form. So these are all like these Midtown-specific policies that build on the current official plan policies around urban design. And there's also quite a bit around mobility, because again, that's another major factor for building community in Midtown. So in terms of the vision for Midtown, it's not, you know, a huge diversion from what the current vision is. We understand Midtown to be the primary growth area for Oakville. It's also an area that's really ripe for redevelopment and creating this wonderful, vibrant, mixed-use, compact, complete community that's really served well by transit and transportation facilities. So it is the most significant growth area for the town. And of course, there are other areas within the town that are also strategic growth areas, but they're, the way they are intended to develop and grow is not necessarily to the same degree as what we see or plan for in Midtown. There is, the one goal for Midtown is to be the leading strategic growth area within the town, where again, we're leveraging that multimodal transit and transportation system. We're recognizing the wonderful natural heritage system we have through this 16-mile creek. We're recognizing the wonderful natural heritage system we have through this 16-mile creek. We recognize it's an opportunity for regional-scale commercial, institutional, recreational and office facilities. And it's intended to be an area where we're going to accommodate a significant amount of residential and employment growth in this dynamic urban setting. And we've identified three objectives. And again, these are not new objectives. They're already in the official plan and we're just building on those. And what these objectives are to create a supportive community through our built form. To create a vibrant and complete community through the mix of uses that we hope to have in this, in this area at a human scale. And the third objective is to have midtown grow and evolve in a timely manner. And so we want to maintain this notion of the 200 residents and jobs per hectare target, sorry, 200 residents, jobs per hectare target for, by 2031. And even though we realize, you know, through the analysis that's already been done by our consultants, that that is an aggressive expectation, you know, to, to reach that number by 2031. But we want to kind of hold on to that as a, as a target. And we will do that and we will monitor and, and provide infrastructure to support that. So a key change and a significant change in the official plan is the change to the land uses that are in the current official plan. In terms of precincts, we certainly see the, the same sort of notion of precincts. We've changed some of the precinct boundaries to better reflect the context of those areas. And these precincts help to develop the, or shape the, the land uses. And they also help to inform our height and density schedules, which we'll get into later. But from a land use perspective, I just want to kind of highlight, we're converting high-density residential to urban core. We're converting urban center areas to urban core. We're converting office employment areas to urban core. And we're converting some of our community commercial areas to urban core. And by doing so, we are expanding the opportunities for mixed-use development in midtown. And that is one significant way in which we're able to accommodate more growth, population and job growth in this area. We've also identified parks and open spaces on the land use schedule. So these are shown as conceptual. There is a recognition in the policies that the actual configuration and size of these areas, these parks might, may change a bit. But they, we wanted to be able to show it right here on that land use schedule, the intention of developing new parks in addition to the existing ones that we have in midtown. And we've also identified the future transportation network on this land use schedule. And you'll see later some additional schedules that show that in a more detailed manner. Which brings me back to, to mobility and in and beyond midtown. So a real advantage of midtown is the fact that it already has a great transportation and transit system in place. So we want to enhance that and build on that. We are talking about adding new streets and trails to provide better connections and support travel within and beyond midtown. And these streets are not only intended to, you know, assist in moving, moving around in midtown, but they also are intended to create walkable development blocks so that we can have a much more walkable, compact community. So we need those streets to kind of shape those development blocks in the future. In, in the schedules, you'll see that we've identified rights-of-way widths that ensure multiple modes of travel can be accommodated that will support walking, cycling, transit and auto use. And there are policies in the OP that talk about parking. So the, the real intent here is that our preferred system, way of parking would be for underground. However, that we recognize at times, underground parking might not be feasible. And so therefore, you know, the next option would be structured parking above ground. But if that's going to happen, we want to have them wrapped with active uses where they front public streets or parks. And then if there is a need for at-grade parking, those, that direction is for that to happen on the side or, or in the back of the buildings, not in the front, you know, right adjacent to the streets and parks. So this Schedule 5 is the transportation network. And what you'll see first is that we are recognizing some of our streets will be realigned or replaced. The schedule also recognizes that future bridges and underpasses, again, to create better connections to and from midtown. It also identifies various street right-of-ways. And I want to stress again, like even though you're seeing 20 meters to 36-meter wide streets, that doesn't mean that the pavement area is 20 to 36 meters. It is the entire right-of-way that will include transit facilities, bicycle facilities, sidewalks. Some of them maybe are wider sidewalks to accommodate better walking along certain streets to, to create that, that community that we're looking for in terms of this very active, vibrant community. And then finally, we have some notations around future transit stations and stops, including the bus rapid transit route, as well as a transit hub where we, and our BRT stops. So these are all collectively demonstrating how we envision midtown evolving over the fullness of time. And just a, you know, there is a notation on these schedules to acknowledge that these are conceptual, that there would need to be further studies. And those are things that we will be doing through Phase 5 of the midtown program to more clearly delineate and determine the, the actual alignments of these, of these streets. But this provides a good starting point for when we are looking at development applications and being able to determine whether or not we'll need to widen a road or ask for a street to be provided. We also have the act, active transportation system. And this one includes off-road active transportation connections, including going, potentially working with hydro to provide for an active transportation connection along the hydro lines, as well as having active transportation within mid, within the development blocks. We also are identifying certain streets to be ones where we would provide in-right-of-way cycling facilities. And we have identified other off-road active transportation systems along our natural areas. And again, similar to the previous schedule, we identify future bridges and underpasses to allow for connections. And you can see with the lovely arrows how by doing all of these new connections, we're really allowing for active transportation to be able to access midtown as well as other parts of the, of the town. And the real emphasis here is on walking and rolling, right, Jeff? Walking and rolling to and from midtown. So in terms of the community planning permit system, when, when we have that, the bylaw in place, we can ask for the provision of these new streets or widening of streets through the, as a condition of development permit. We can also similarly ask for those, the infrastructure that would happen subsurface through, through the development permit as a, as a condition. And another thing I just want to highlight is in terms of the floor space index calculation and how much gross floor area may be provided for on a site, the policies explain that we are calculating that, that total GFA based on the site before any lands are conveyed for park or streets. So basically, the density that you would, would have had on the lands that are being dedicated to the town gets shifted onto the balance of the property. So there's, there's an opportunity to shift that density and see, make sure that, that the, the full gross density is being achieved on that site if, if the proponent wishes to do that. In terms of public service facilities on the slide, you'll see the definition for what is a public service, public service facility. They are permitted in all of our land use designations. So, you know, urban core, community commercial and, and the office employment would all, we would be allowing for those to occur in all of those designations. And we encourage them to be integrated with development and visible and easy to access. We have some specific policies around schools. Again, they're encouraged to co-locate with public parkland and be integrated with development. And the other policy is that we require the developers to consult with the school boards early in their application process to make sure there's an understanding of what are the school needs and if there is an opportunity to integrate that school onsite. And we also, in Schedule Al 1, which is the land use schedule, we have identified two priority areas for future school sites, which happen to be adjacent to our, our future parkland. But that doesn't exclude, or it's not exclusive to those sites. And there may be opportunities for schools in other places as well, but those are the priority areas. So from a CPPS perspective, the bylaw would identify public service facilities as a permitted use and, and on, and all of those land use designations. It would provide for the public's, the facilities to be a condition of development permit approval or issuance. And where they locate that public service facility is something that can be determined through the development permit application process. Where there's an opportunity to, to discuss the siting of those public service facilities. And the provision of those facilities may be a community benefit where if the development is going beyond the threshold heights, which Jeff will get into, that may be one of, that may be the, the trade-off, if you will, by providing for that public service facility in the, onsite. From a parkland perspective, as I mentioned before, the Schedule 1 shows the future park areas conceptually. This, this map here is just for you to kind of clearly see where those park sites are because it might be a little bit difficult to read on the land use schedule itself. What you're seeing here is consistent with what we've been proposing since 2023. It's about 12 hectares of parkland to occur. And that includes existing parkland as well. They, these parks are intended to be public common or urban square. And the programming of those parks would be determined through the Parks Plan. From a CPP perspective, we would be able to require parkland as a condition of development permit approval and issuance, just as we've always done with our parkland dedication bylaw. But we may also accept additional land for public park as a community benefit. So again, if the development is going above the threshold heights, this is one of those community benefits that could be negotiated through that process. And we know that just relying on our dedication bylaw is not going to be sufficient to get those 12 hectares. So this is definitely one of those community benefits we'll be, we hope to be able to use. And in terms of mix of use policies, so these are the policies that we're trying to put in place to ensure that, you know, midtown is not a bedroom, vertical bedroom community, but is actually a place where people live and work. So there are a number of policies in the OP that speak to how we can encourage and in some instances, require the provision of non-residential uses. And so those can be public service facilities, as well as retail facilities, offices, and, you know, anything that would support new jobs within the, within midtown. And so as you see on the slide, we have a requirement for at-grade facilities where they're fronting public streets. There's a requirement for those areas where we've identified them as active frontages that at least 70% of the building frontage actually does include non-residential uses. Again, to kind of create that vibrant, walkable community. We have policies that speak to a minimum percentage of the GFA in the urban core designation. So 18% of the, the GFA for new development in the urban core would need to be a non-residential use. Again, public facilities are encouraged everywhere. We have policies around existing uses. So if you're going to, you know, there's an existing non-residential use and you're redeveloping that site, we're asking that you bring back the same gross leasable area into that building. So if it was more than 18%, we want more than 18% to happen in that, in that site. And there's also policies that recognize that some of these facilities or these businesses, they're not intending to leave anytime soon, but they might want to expand their current operation. And there's flexibility in the OP to allow for those expansions to happen, even if they're not necessarily meeting minimum density requirements at the time. But there's this recognition that over the long, long term, those sites will be redeveloped and, and that will provide a mix of use. There's also provisions that allow for integrated or standalone non-residential use. So even though we say for this site, 18% of the GFA must be non-residential, there could be a case where they have one building that's completely residential and another building that's completely non-residential, and that's okay. So there's that flexibility. And there's also an opportunity to say, I'm going to build my non-res, my residential building, you know, in Phase 1, and I'm going to build the non-residential building in Phase 2. And that's okay too, as long as we have an agreement that there's an understanding that that non-residential to meet the full 18% is going to happen in that future phase. And I think that, that captures everything there. And so in terms of the CPP, again, the minimum requirements would be established in the bylaw. So that 18%, that 70%, those types of requirements could be established in the bylaw. And because we have policies in the OPA that provide some flexibility on meeting those minimums, we also have the ability, when issuing those development permits, to use some discretion and potentially, in some cases, see something less. For, based on studies that are provided to us that explain why it may be less. And I'll, and I'll just give you like a good example is, as you'll see in just a portion of the presentation, we make some assumptions about how much GFA is needed to be able to meet this job target, which, as you might remember, we want 65 residents to 35 jobs. So we have some assumptions around, well, how do we get 35 to, that, that 35, 65 ratio? And it may be that some types of businesses actually require much less space, but still provide the same number of jobs. And in that situation, it may be appropriate to say, well, you don't need to do 18% of your GFA. 10% works. You're still giving us the jobs. Because that's what we're really after, is making sure we have, you know, vibrant, active communities where we have jobs. And if it does turn out that a, a lesser number achieves the same objective, then there's flexibility with the approval of that development permit to do so. Our housing policies. We have a requirement for the residential development to be, on average, five stories or greater. There's a few reasons for why we want the five stories or greater. One is, we don't really want to see standalone townhouses in midtown. That's not the location for, for that type of development. We can certainly see town heist, town heist, eh, townhouse-type development happening in the podiums of buildings. So you still get that kind of development, but it's not a standalone townhouse. So that's one reason. Another reason is this way we can ensure, and you'll, you'll see in the CPPS conditions section, we've included a policy that allows us to basically mimic what we do with a CBC charge. So we can establish the same requirements that we have in our CBC bylaw within the CPPS system. And in order, and to be fair, we want to make sure that it's for development, residential development, that's five stories or greater. So we have that minimum average five stories established in the, as a, as a minimum for that type of development. We encourage non-market housing, special needs and affordable housing and rental housing. Now, this is something that's encouraged across the entire town. But we just want to reemphasize, in midtown, this is really an expectation that we're going to have that kind of development happening here. It's the prime It's the prime location for that, given all of the the transit supportive development that is going to be here. But we also permit a mix of housing forms and tenure. Again, that that's a a global policy of of the town, but it's, we just want to reiterate it here. In terms of multi-unit buildings, we want to ensure that they accommodate a range of households by having variety of unit sizes and onsite amenities for different household types. We've also included a policy that if you have a building with 20 or more units, then 35% of those units should include two or more bedrooms. We think that this is reasonable. It's something that's already being happening within the GTA, and we want to continue to ensure that that is the case. And if you're wondering, why is it 20 or more units? It's because you can't do 35% in 19 units or less. So so that's where the the numbers coming from. And then finally, we have a policy that basically says that when we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw in effect, you'll need to abide by it. I mean, that's pretty obvious. But we just want the development community to be on notice, that it is the intention of the town, subject to completing that housing needs assessment, that inclusionary zoning is going to be part of what happens in Midtown. So in terms of of how the CPPS implements all of these policies, we will be able to put in provisions regarding that unit mix of the the 35%, for example, and the provision of amenity spaces into the into the bylaw, and they would be a condition of of the development permit approval. We will allow for afford, we will add provisions around affordable housing in terms of inclusionary zoning. So our expectation is that by the time we go to adopt that CPP bylaw, the housing needs assessment work and the OPA that enables in the inclusionary zoning would all happen, and we could adopt them concurrently. So we would able, we would be able to have the enabling IZD policies and the provisions in the CPP bylaw for IZD to happen at the same time. And also beyond the required units, affordable housing could be a a community benefit. So above and beyond what is required would allow for a greater height than the threshold. We also have policies around sustainability, but I just want to be clear. Our official plan already has a lot of policies that support sustainable development. So what we've done is looked at, well, how can we improve upon that? Where can we build more into it? So there are policies around stormwater management and and other matters. Active transportation is again, of course, something that supports sustainable development. But in addition to that, we also have a policy that speaks to the types of kind of sustainable development measures that could be put into a building. And there may be a requirement that as part of the application, the applicant, you know, describes, here are the tactics I'm going to be using that support sustainable development. And the nice thing about doing that is when we go to do the development permit approval, we would be able to look at, well, you said you were going to do A, B, C, and D from a sustainable development perspective. We want to make sure that those things are included in your in your application for the development permit. And so some of these tactics include things like providing renewable energy facilities, green roofs, street trees or trees onsite, bird-friendly design, geothermal facilities, and so on. And so when the, some of these elements, we may also identify as being a a community benefit. And so we would be, it would be a condition, you know, to have that increase in height because they are providing these types of sustainable measures. And you know, some of these can be quite costly, so it's a fair trade off, if you will, to say, okay, because you're doing this, we would accept that that additional height. The OPA also speaks to natural heritage and natural hazards. So there are, there is an area within the Midtown that is considered a natural or designated a natural area. And so we defer to the parent policies of the official plan in terms of natural areas. So you don't see anything specific in the OPA itself or in that Chapter 20, because we refer to the the part C and D of the official plan. And as Gabe mentioned, in terms of Conservation Halton and the spill flood zone work that they're doing, we have introduced policies in the OPA that speak to the spill flood hazard. These are policies that have been shared with us by Conservation Halton. They are policies that they're presently consulting on themselves. And as their work continues, we will make revisions accordingly and and make sure that we align our policies with theirs. And then on the slide, you just have a little diagram that explains what is the spill zone. So you can see that it's part of a flood hazard limit, but these spill zone areas are not in the flood plain themselves. And there's some links here if you wish to to learn to learn more about that. And as Gabe mentioned, there's more engagement that the Conservation Halton is doing right now on this matter. So from a community planning permit system perspective, this is something that we can deal with in terms of for the natural area, obviously, there would be lands limited permissions for for land use on the on within the natural area. There would be prohibited uses. And then in the in the instance of the spill flood hazard zone, we can work with the conservation authority in terms of establishing appropriate conditions of the development permit approval, because the real intent here is for risk mitigation. And so there may be, we may ask for the the proponent to do monitoring even after the development permit is issued. And now I'm going to pass this on to to Jeff to speak about urban design and built form and also how we, to to answer the councillor's question, how we are able to leverage the height to get community benefits. So thank you.
Thanks, Isabel, and good evening, Madam Chair and members of council and everyone watching online. Ms. Isabel mentioned-
Point of order, Madam Chair, we have some questions on the on the last presentation. Could we have those answered before we go into the next, the next set of slides, please?
Thank you, Mr. Councillor Chisholm. I didn't see your hand up, so, yes. Isabel, I think they have questions for you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Our intention was to to complete the description of the OPA and then answer questions, but I'm at your mercy, so.
Well, I'll be honest with you, if you continue on with all this information, I might forget what it was because it's very complex information to absorb all at once. So I just wanted to make sure I want to get these answers so I have clarification on it. So let's go back to Slide 31 on your presentation.
So the housing policy one, Councillor Chisholm.
Yeah, I think it's the land use policy one, wasn't it? The land use. Oh, maybe hold on here. So this is what happens when we're moving so far. Okay. Yes, there, okay, the housing policy, again, it's it's more in the 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 literature and point to encourage, and the words encourage, non-market housing, especially it's affordable housing and rental. But on your next slide, I think you're very definite and and strong in your language. So can we just see provision of affordable housing will be a condition? So I I know they might be two, two different things, but I think we have to be very, how I say, definite with our with our language with respect to moving forward on that. I like the going back, the ones to provide rather than to encourage, if if that's if that's a possibility.
Yeah, again, just the, we would be able to require them once we've established those inclusionary zoning provisions in the bylaw. And and we, as I said before, we need to go through the steps of first enabling inclusionary zoning through our official plan and then putting those measures into the bylaw. But for now, we've we've put people on notice that it's our intention to use inclusionary zoning, and there would be a certain amount of housing that would would have to be provided at an affordable rate.
Okay, look, the slide on land use policies, do you have that one? I got the numbers wrong. The land use policy slide.
The one with all with the schedules on Slide 20?
Yes.
Slide 20?
No, land, land use policy, okay. Oh, yes, that that, so can you just clarify converting everything to urban core? Does that give us more flexibility with respect to moving forward? I'm trying to understand why we're going to move it to urban core, just for my own information.
Sure, urban core is, I guess, the the most generous in terms of the mix and use of of land that we, in terms of the, all of the policies that we have and our all of our land use types in our official plan. Urban core gives us the biggest, the broadest opportunities for for a mix. And that's why we want to shift to-
Thank you, that's that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Councillor Giddings, it looks like you are next.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thanks, Ray. Like Ray, I'd be keeping notes upon notes and trying to remember them till the end. At the start, we heard about the Conservation Halton with the with the flood studies and 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 holding tanks and so on. That's the meeting that's coming up this week?
Yeah, I believe it's two weeks from now.
Okay, so-
24th, October 24th.
So that's the current one, and so we can promote that to our residents. There's a lot of information coming at them right now. In in terms of employment, given the status of of work home, from home, coming into offices, what tools will we have to be able to ensure that we keep those employment numbers without seeing those transferred and losing that ability?
Right. So there's a few things, as you probably noticed when we were showing you the land use schedule, there are still some areas that are that continue to be designated office employment and community commercial. So those sites, there wouldn't be residential development. And part of the reason why those are retained as such is given the proximity to the rail yard, right? So it's a sensitive use to have residential within 300 meters. So we're limited to how how far out we can push that urban core designation. So so those areas will only be for jobs. In terms of the other, in the urban core area, as I mentioned before, there is that threshold of at least 18% of your gross floor area is to provide for jobs. The other thing is there is a lot of people that are working from home. And so there is a possibility that in these residential developments, there may be spaces that become opportunities for work from home. They may create larger units. They may create amenity space where people can have a meeting if they need to or almost like, you know, hotels have those business centers. They might create that kind of space within their buildings. So the idea is that we need to be flexible, and that's why I said, like, maybe they came in and they said, we're only going to do 10% GFA because we're going to create all this other amenity space that makes up, that that creates opportunity for people to work from home. So those are kind of decisions that we'll have to make as we learn more about this, right? There is a lot of literature that says work from home is going to stay. And there's some literature that says, no, it's not. So we need to create that flexibility, which is another reason why the OP right now allows for your phase two, right? So maybe right now there isn't a big market for office. And that's certainly something we saw in the NBLC research was office is going to take a lot longer to, you know, come back. So if that's the case, let them build the residential building now. Phase two, phase three perhaps, is going to be a full-on office building. So we allow for that kind of flexibility, recognizing that things are changing and we just need to kind of be mindful of that and not sort of force something that's not-
No, I appreciate that. My crystal ball is somewhat hazy as well. We've talked about this at council before. Can you foresee a time where through federal income tax returns, whatever, you know, people claiming office space, their home office, where we would be able to capture that person or those people working out of their condos to say, yeah, you know what, this, they're working from home, that at least part of that should count towards the numbers?
I'm sorry, that's outside of my bailiwick.
All right. Like-
I'm sorry, I should say one thing, though. In the census, I think you do get some of that information, do you not? In the census? I don't know. Anyway, sorry, it gets outside of my bailiwick, I'll just-
I appreciate that. Further to Councillor Ray, the difference between wills and shalls and and maybes and possibles and and so on. It's good to see new public service facilities shall be provided. When it comes to the the process, are they allowed to come? Is a doctor the same as a dentist? Is a lawyer's office the same? Like, do we, can we specify certain aspects of the professionals or the services that we want there? Or is it based on square footage and we don't really care? And is it individual negotiating with each building or provider? I'm just curious.
Certainly, those are probably questions that we would discuss in developing the bylaw, but, yeah. Sorry, okay. Generally, you want to be very flexible when identifying use. So I I wouldn't recommend being that specific. You know, usually you have medical offices, which can include a whole variety of things. At the OP level, you want to keep it quite high level in terms of what are the the ranges of uses. And then when you're developing your bylaw, you can get more specific.
Let the market look after itself.
Yeah, you want to be flexible, especially in a place like Midtown. You really want to have that.
All right, you mentioned in terms of the park space and how it will mesh with the Park Rec Library Master Plan that is also coming at us, because on the map it shows the trail, it shows the the cycle, whatever. How do we mix, make sure that there are the connectors there with the rest of the plan in terms of the trails, the walkways and everything else? Is that, I guess that's for a meeting to come on Parks Rec Library Master Plan, perhaps?
Yeah, I would, I would say like, certainly we can get into it more. But these two, the the official plan and those master plans, they work together. They they inform each other. So in some cases, we're informed by the Parks Plan. And then in other cases, they're informed by the longer term visioning that's happening at the official plan level. So you want to make sure that these two, these two plans are working together and supporting each other. But what what the slide was basically indicating is, you know, the programming, you know, is it going to be a tot lot or is it going to be an exercise facility? Those kind of things, like inside your your park or your recreation, that's not at an OP level discussion. It's it's those master plans, because they look at, well, who's living here? What are the needs? You know, that that kind of more detailed analysis.
All right, I see a lineup starting. So two, just two other questions for now. Achieving community objectives through a CPPS, and one of them is realizing sustainability measures. And we talk about negotiating different things, whether it be solar, solar panels. We talk about bikes and change areas and everything else. There was a information out from the Oakville Community Foundation today. 58% of greenhouse gases in Halton are from buildings. Transportation followed at 36%. Doesn't this provide us with an opportunity to get district energy, geo exchange in from the start where everybody can benefit from it? And the residents? So is that one of the ones that we're looking at?
Yeah, so through through the development permit approvals, we have a lot more leeway in terms of the things that we can make as a- we have a lot more leeway in terms of the things that we can make as a condition of development. Uh one of the real benefits of the development permit approval is it is applicable law. So when you go to get your building permit, if there was something established in your development permit approval that maybe said, I'm gonna put in a green roof, you can now get that building, you the building inspector is gonna say, well, where's the green roof on this building? Cuz you that was part of your development permit approval. What we wanna make sure, though, is, um again, you're not being too onerous with the types of conditions that you're asking for because you don't wanna exclude development from happening at all. So there has to be that fair balance. And that's another piece, and and Jeff will get into it, is where we're saying, you know, you reach this height and then you're 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 in that negotiating phase, we need to ensure that the negotiation, that there's a commensurate system where you've you got additional height, which means you got additional gross floor area. And therefore, because of that, you you have, we have some opportunity to see some benefits here that we wouldn't otherwise get. So some things, like a bike um lollipop, may be just a regular condition of approval, right? You just you need to have bike parking facilities on your site. That's not negotiable. Um other things like geothermal, that's a big uh ask. That may be something where we say, you gave us geothermal, here's some extra height on your building. So those are the things, again, those kinds of things we need to deal discuss when developing the bylaw itself. So you don't wanna hurry your bylaw development either, right? Because you wanna be able to get this right.
Yeah, I believe we have to get it to a point where every developer has has to do that. Uh last question, Midtown is the leading strategic growth area because of the transit, because it's on for Falger and the QEW, just?
Yeah, well, there's there's definitely, we have the Via and the Go Station, right? That's the only place where we have both Via and Go. Um we have the QEW, you've got all of these uh um the BRT coming as well. And I think ultimately, it started with the growth plan, notwithstanding that the growth plan is going to be revoked. But it started with the growth plan with these twenty-five urban growth centers across the Greater Golden Horseshoe. Midtown was one of them. So um that's where we got this idea that it needs to grow, it needs to grow fast. We need to start getting development happening to meet this twenty thirty-one number. So that was kind of the starting point, and that's been what's been leading our urban structure work uh since two thousand and nine. And we we believe that it still makes sense to continue that 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 vision of it being the prime, the leading growth center for Mid uh for Oakville.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Giddings, Councillor Elgar.
Thank you, through uh a acting mayor. Um just a question, I have to go back to uh the director, Charles, just for my own clarification. To me, it's this whole, everything is about numbers. And I've got a letter here that was sent to members of council from Commissioner Garby back April the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, which states the municipal housing pledge does not represent new or additional growth. And it goes on, rather it represents commitment to facilitate accelerated growth to twenty thirty-two. So has that all changed since that point? Because that's not what I think I heard from the the director in about half an hour ago.
Through you, Madam Chair, um thank you, Councillor, for the opportunity to clarify. What we have said is that when the approval was made by the Minister for ROPA forty-nine, that did not include the thirty-three thousand units that were um part of of the pledge. What we have said is that it's not part of the uh the forecast insofar as we're accelerating those units. So it comes down to a timeframe within which we're looking at those units. So those need need to be accounted for because those had been units which would have gone beyond twenty thirty-one. We've accelerated those by bringing them in. That's what had the effect of the the four hundred or what influenced the four hundred and forty-two thousand population. That's what created the ramp up uh and why we said it it's going to take longer than we had anticipated to achieve the the four hundred and forty-two thousand. It it's pulling, it it's how it pulls the units forward, and that's what influences the the population, um the the trajectory of the population in that forecast. So there's a minimum that gets established through the region's plan. That's now our plan, we take on that number, but it becomes a minimum. Those additional units is how we have to account for the accelerated growth. So in that sense, what what the the letter was saying is, although it doesn't mean that it's adding to it, what it does do is it brings it into uh the forecast time period faster.
Which is exactly what he said, some of the growth represented by the municipal housing pledge is growth. Oakville would have otherwise experienced, but it doesn't move it. It doesn't make the number of people or jobs larger based on the thirty-three thousand units. If, I guess, pretty good, pretty clear when I read it. That's why I'm still confused as to is it or not, is it not? That that's, you know, numbers are important, and this definitely states that the thirty-three thousand units do not change the 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 forecast of people or job. Like, was he just, maybe he was incorrect when he wrote it, I don't, I'm not sure.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm not sure, is there is there a question in there or?
No, I just wanna make sure, like, is that is that true or not? Is is the thirty-three thousand additional growth or is it just, or is it included in the in the number? The thirty-three thousand units, I understand that they're between units and people, but I just have to understand, is the three forty ninety-nine, the thirty-three thousand units do not change that number from based on what he is specifically saying is in the paragraph?
Through you, Madam Chair, uh sorry, Councillor, let let me see if I if I can try it again. When the minister had given Halton Region the the population numbers in in the table for the various local municipalities, it did not account for those thirty-three thousand units or the housing pledges of the various locals. It didn't include that in the population. If it had, the number may have been different because of where the forecast lands. What we're trying to say is that the thirty-three thousand units to be realized by twenty thirty-one were actually pulled forward from in the forecast from post twenty thirty-one to to account for that overall population. So the population changes based on where those units sit in the forecast. That's really what it what it's trying to to ultimately uh account for.
Okay, which is what he said, municipal housing pledge does not represent newer additional growth. Got it. Okay, I thank you for that. Um now if we move on to uh, when you get into uh twenty point four point one general, when you talk about, I would like to know, what is affordable housing uh under the section F of housing? Can can staff explain what their concept is of affordable housing?
So as you might remember, in the um affordable uh the white paper that we presented back in in March, there are many definitions of affordable housing. There's a policy definition in the provincial policy statement, now the provincial planning statement. There's a definition in the regional official plan, there's a definition in our official plan. There's a diva- definition for the Development Chargers Act, so it does vary from document to document. And so one of the things that we intend to do uh through the completion of the Housing Needs Assessment is to define affordable housing for Oakville um from a policy perspective. Potentially will look different from an inclusionary zoning perspective. Um it really depends on, you know, what is the objective and what's the appropriate definition for it? But just the general understanding of what is affordable is really dependent on the person. And the CMHC indicates that what is affordable for a household is thirty is not to spend more than thirty percent of their income on the cost uh on the on the cost of their home. So that's the, like, the pure definition is, you know, not to be able, not have to spend more than thirty percent of your household income. And of course, everyone has a different household income. Um but yeah, so from the perspective of the official plan, that is one of the pieces that we want to be able to do uh once the Housing Needs Assessment is done, is to have a clear definition that works for Oakville.
I thank you for that answer because that is where I feel very bad for people that are coming out to speak to council about they want affordable housing, and yet we have a report from the regional uh CAO pointing out just how many units that they determine are affordable. And I think it was four in the last year or something that are actually affordable based on income. So you 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 nailed it, and that's where we have to get across to the public. I thank you for that. Educational facilities shall be built to an urban standard. What is an urban standard?
Um so that's a that's a good question. Uh generally, you know, we we have schools that are over the past, you know, in the past, in the suburban areas that are quite sprawling, there may be only one or two stories uh with, you know, large fields. What we're seeing is in the urban standard, and you'll see examples of it in in Toronto and in other places, is an integrated school. So the school may be two or three floors within the podium of a building. Um they still will have opportunity for outdoor facilities, of course. Uh they might be on the roof of a building, like the podium of a building. Um but there is uh work being done around, you know, the different ways in which we can provide for schools. And again, I've there you, we are seeing more examples of them, but the idea is to be more compact uh and I and integrated with built with um other development, whether it's other public facilities, like libraries and recreation centers, or even in a in a private um residential building.
Uh I I agree with what you're saying. You don't see too many football fields, I guess, going forward in our schools. Okay, I I've got so many questions, I I'm gonna, I'll I'll pass. I appreciate what you're saying, uh I thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Elgar, Councillor Amira.
Hi, uh thanks so much for the presentation. I I believe it was slide twenty-nine, and you don't have to go back to it, but it just talked about a percentage on the ground floor um that could be that that could be used for residential area um uh or that had to be commercial, I forget what the what the nuance was. Um part of the difficulty that we've seen is some of the condo developers has decided have decided it's more um more of an economic benefit to just eat that twenty percent and put condo amenities down there, like gyms and pools and and whatever. Um so it still becomes private space, um even though it doesn't count as residential space. So they're taking what should be um um commercial or retail or something like that and just using it as condo amenity space on the ground floor to get around not having to put their condo stuff up somewhere where they can put units up there. So so what are we gonna do to ensure that the ground floor stays uh commercial, retail, um um included? And and I know they need a place to to walk and egress the condo, but they're they're throwing at all types of condo amenities on the main floor so that they don't have to deal with tenants and and these sorts of things. So how can we further protect and enshrine the fact that we want the main street mixed-use buildings to actually be used for public amenity or public commercial and retail space?
Through you, Chair. Um so as a starting point, the policy is uh for those um sites that are on these active frontage streets, which is a a figure in the OPA E one, uh there is a requirement that seventy percent of that uh frontage be for non-residential uses. When we go to establish the CPP bylaw, we can be more prescriptive there in terms of what constitutes the non-res- non-residential use. The OP has um a list, you know, that speaks to public service facilities, um re- commercial, retail, office. Uh but we can be more specific, and I understand your point in terms of, well, I'll just put my gym on the on that active frontage, you know, and how is that different than the Good Life Gym, right? So you can see that there can be some challenges with that. Uh but we could certainly um dive into that a little bit more in detail through the bylaw development itself.
Well, like, I I guess my 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 problem with that is if we're if we're just gonna say, okay, seventy percent is fine, I mean, wh- why why would we limit ourselves to that? Why wouldn't we say eighty or eighty-five um has to be that? I I just, I I know we wanna deal with the stuff and specifics in the bylaw, but thirty percent is a massive chunk when we're already gonna be struggling for commercial and retail. Why would, why are we settling on that number?
Uh thirty percent would allow, like, it it really depends on how much frontage you actually have, right? But you definitely wanna still be able to establish um a lobby area, like an entranceway into that residential building. So um we we've used thirty percent as a reasonable um gee um per- proportion of the frontage to allow for, you know, that opportunity to be able to access the building, recognizing that um, you know, some of these sites may be quite narrow. Uh so that that was the the thinking behind the thirty percent uh being available for the residential use.
Okay, yeah, I I still think we've got more work to do on that, but I appreciate the uh the answer, thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Councillor Amira, Councillor Nanda.
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor. Um thank you for the presentation so far. So on slide thirty-one, when we're talking about the units, and you've said that uh we would require a minimum of thirty-five percent of units of two bedrooms or more. I know that developers are gonna be very reluctant to even wanna do that because based on what we've seen and what we're seeing already, most wanna build max one unit, and 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 they seem to think that that's enough. And very, very few two-bedroom units um that they feel like they're they're required to provide. And so my question is, is one, how how is there gonna be a lot of reluctance that developers will actually build it or try to find a way to not have to build it? Um and then my other question is, I, for me, I think this is great cuz we have a lot of multi-generational families coming in now. We've said this multiple times, especially up in our area uh due to affordable housing and stuff. If we're gonna have units like this, three bedrooms at least would be able to fit a family. But I've heard from developers in Toronto and other areas that they're becoming very creative, that they will build units that they say are two or three-bedroom units, but they're only like six hundred square feet. And they become creative because they put dividers or they they put something in the unit to create units that they consider two or three-bedroom unit. Would we be able to put minimums in terms of square footage?
Um again, I think something, sorry, through you, Chair, uh there's quite a quite a lot of comments there. So one, we did do some research, um NBLC did some research uh when this first came up, and we did find that thirty-five percent is something that the market is already doing. Uh maybe not exclusively, but there are lots of developments that are coming in at that um that rate. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of comments we get back from the development community when they see this this um new amendment. And, you know, we'll take their um comments and and consider um, you know, if there's revisions that are required. Uh in terms of, you know, this idea of a minimum unit size, again, that's not something you would see in an official plan. Uh that may be something we wanna consider for um our bylaws. Again, we'll consult on that and we'll see. Certainly, we can't do things that are beyond the building code, but uh we can investigate that. Um the other thing I wanted to also mention is there is a policy in the OPA that says certain, like, special needs housing would not be required to provide that thirty-five percent. And with the understanding that those types of housing, it may not warrant that kind of mix. Um so we wanted to curate that flexibility, like, say Sheridan College was gonna create a student residence, it may not, you know, they may want to just have um studio units or something like that. Uh or it's a long-term care facility or whatever. So certain types of spec- special needs housing wouldn't be required to provide that, so there is that flexibility. Um and yeah, so we'll see what kind of responses we get back from the development community on that policy, and we'll um consider those those comments and and make a recommendation accordingly.
Thank you. And just on the education piece, on on the schools piece, um I I would be very cautious into putting schools into urban as an urban setting. Personally, I feel if you live in downtown Toronto, you're in an urban setting, yeah, you may see schools there, but when you're living in the suburbs, I think it's a disadvantage to have kids play on podiums or not be able to run out. I know my kids in the summer months, the teachers like to take them out into the park and let them be outside and let them breathe and do their classes out there. And then there's lots of space for a lot of the classes to be able to come out. And especially, one of the concerns, and I had brought this up before, doing it in this kind of setting where you're you're doing it in in a building or you're building podiums, we're gonna have portables. And my question is, where are those portables gonna go? And the and and that's not a if or a maybe. They're they're gonna, they're there, we have them already, and they're not going away. But it's also, how much space can the kids have to come out? But it's also, how much space can the kids have to come out? I do know that you can put private schools or Montessori schools in urban settings, and that's already happened. We just had a new one open as well. And those are different because, of course, there's limits to how many people are, are gonna be in there, and, and they can set those limits. But when you're in a public setting, um, public schools, um, I still think we need to build schools the way we've been building schools. I, we're making everything so compact, but I think it's such a disadvantage that, um, okay, maybe not my kids, but my grandkids or whatever would not be able to play outside in a park the way we got to. And that just goes back to quality of life. I feel like we're putting all this together, we're putting numbers together, and we wanna fit people places, we wanna create jobs, we wanna create that. I still think we need to come back to creating a good quality of life. I don't feel like you live in a building, you're sending your kid downstairs to school, then they're playing on the podium, and then they're coming back home. You know, I, I, they need to be, be able to be out. I still think we need to put schools the way, the, the way they should be built, which is right now.
Thank you, councillor Nanda. Councillor Adams.
Thanks very much. I've got two questions for you. One is about the non-res GFA numbers that are in the, on page twenty-nine of the deck, anyway. Can you show the, the, the work or the calculations that go into why eighteen percent was chosen? So I understand it's based on determining a certain number of jobs to get a thirty-five percent ratio. Can you show for the public, uh, what the number of employees per X number of hundred square feet or whatever it is that, um, is being chosen? And does it change based on the type of building between retail and an office kind of environment?
Through you, Chair. We will, we will get into that a little bit more later on in the presentation. Um, but what the eighteen percent was getting at based on the modeling, like the mathematical modeling that we've done, is recognizing that a certain amount of jobs are occurring in the employment area and the community commercial area. And, um, we also need jobs, obviously, in the urban core. And it's the combination of the total, like, the one-hundred percent GFA that happens in the employment and commercial.
Yeah.
Plus the eighteen percent that happens in the, um-
The rest.
In the rest, that combined give you that rate of sixty-five to thirty-five.
Yeah. So can you show us the, those numbers? Because I think there's gonna be, uh, undoubtedly, there's gonna be, uh, discussion about how many jobs get created, and is that the right number? And are we using the right assumption and all these things? And I, if we don't show the, our work, our calculations, then there's gonna be a debate as to whether the number is the right number.
Right.
So can we show the calculation?
So we do have some calculations that Jeff will do a great job of, um, showing, and then if there's more information that's required, we'll certainly be able to show that.
So I've seen the, um, the rest of the slide deck that we've got, and I don't think it provides the level of detail of the calculations that I think is required to-
We did add one extra slide.
Oh, okay. There's, there's a bonus slide, okay.
Yeah, there's a bonus slide.
Awesome. I look forward to the bonus slide.
Hopefully, hopefully, the bonus slide will, will answer that question better.
Okay, so I, I look forward to that. I'll leave that with you. And the other question is about the thirty-five percent for the, uh, the multi, uh, uh, bedroom apartments as part of the, um, uh, the residential buildings that we were just talking about. Um, and I also, I agree with the, the concept of providing some kind of minimum square footage per bedroom, because, uh, you know, fifty-square-foot closet bedrooms doesn't cut it, I think. Uh, you said that thirty-five percent for twenty units was chosen. The twenty units was chosen because the math is easy, basically, is what I heard you say. Um, seems pretty simple to me that if the number of units in a building is less, like ten, then it's gotta be more than thirty-five percent, so four units have to be more. Um, why don't we just say it applies to all unit, all buildings regardless of number of units, and you gotta hit at least thirty-five percent? And if, if it means you get to forty percent, well, so be it.
I'll take that back.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Councillor Noel, you're up.
Thank you. Um, my primary question was what Tom just, uh, raised in terms of the eighteen percent, and I just wanna have one little extra clarification on that. Will there be some sort of policies established with that to not just determine, not show the calcul- show our math, so to speak, but also to dem- not to demonstrate, but to hard code or create policies as to what those, what that eighteen percent can be used for? I've raised this a few times, that we've always, we've had this phenomenon where we put aside, uh, non-residential uses for supposedly retail uses, for that animation, for that active streets, streetscape, and they always end up as nail salons and dentist's office. And while they're important, they don't create the animation that we always ta- attempt to achieve. You just have to look at the uptown core.
Right.
Uh, to really understand that.
So, once you've created a box for a non-residential use, that box is going to evolve. You might start out with a nail salon, and then it becomes a lovely bakery, and then it becomes something else. Well, we're at an OP level, you wanna establish that the box is gonna be there, and then over time, the market will create what the market needs, right? And I mean, I, like, you see that in any community. There's, the, the stores open and close, and new things come and go. Um, but as a policy document, you just wanna ensure that there's a space for those things to come. And, like, I know an experience I have in, near where I live, you know, right now, it's a bunch of little tiny restaurants, but the actual box is big enough that you could make one great big grocery store. So it really will change as, as the market, uh, changes as well. Um, so, so what we wanna do at a policy level is create the box, make sure the box is there.
Sure. Well, my experience has been, having been a councillor here for more than a couple decades, is that it does, it doesn't change. Uh, it certainly doesn't change within the time horizons of the people that are buying into these communities and, and hoping that their communities are going to get, have what they were shown. They're gonna look at pictures like these, and they're gonna say, oh, I'm gonna have a nice B store, and I'm gonna have a nice toy store, whatever the case is.
Yeah.
And they're waiting decades, and meanwhile, they age out and they move out, and nothing ever occurs. And, and this is happening here and now. So I'm not sure that that old paradigm works anymore, um, that you, that you hope and pray that it's going to evolve. Because my experience in my ward, and I've seen it in other wards as well, is that it doesn't happen. So that's a comment.
Okay.
To take back, and I, I'm gonna be looking for more concrete policies around, uh, actual uses. Um, the second question I have for you is, uh, and this is a really, you know, important part of all of this is, uh, affordable housing. This is, in every, tip of everybody's tongue. Does CPP give us any additional tools to ensure that affordable housing remains affordable?
Yes.
What are those tools?
So as, uh, whether it's inclusionary zoning or a condition based on the additional height, uh, that is provided, there we, you can have an agreement on title that says this unit is going to stay affordable for X number of years. And so even when it's resold, it's still being, um, sold or rented at that affordable rate.
And that can be hardcoded in this bylaw?
In the bylaw.
It, so that, that'll be actually in the bylaw that those, that those policies can be enforced?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. That, I liked that answer better than the first one, but thank you for both answers.
Hang in there, you got one, at least one more. Councillor McNeese.
Uh, thank you. One additional question, uh, through you, Madam Chair. Um, regarding the concrete policies that, uh, councillor Noel mentioned related to the eighteen percent commercial, um, my understanding of CPPS, when we get into the bylaw, we can be a bit more specific on uses if we say wanted to ensure there was a daycare, um, I don't know, if it's every five hundred meters or grocery store. Could you maybe just elaborate on that a little bit?
Through you, Chair. Um, when developing the bylaw, it's just like a zoning bylaw. You'll have a list of permitted uses. You can also have prohibited uses. So if there were certain things that you didn't wanna see happening, or you, or you, you know, you may have a very narrow list of permitted uses, I wouldn't recommend that. But as, as any bylaw, like zoning bylaw, the same kind of set standards can be established in, in the CPP bylaw. Um, so, so there is that opportunity to do so. And then, of course, you know, that will be debated, and, uh, um, and we'll see where, where we land.
Okay. And then regarding the affordability, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but did Burlington not, to the exact dollar amount, put what a affordable unit is? I, I remember, I believe I remember seeing that in their proposed bylaw.
Um, I, I can't confirm whether they did that, but they may have done that in, in terms of, um, how they wanted to define affordable.
Okay.
And it could be subject to change, I guess, annually as you see what the, um, household incomes are.
Okay. So that's something we could consider in our bylaw? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNeese. Um, I'm just gonna ask a couple clarifying questions. Um, so, so you mentioned earlier, these conditions, um, all these conditions that we can put in place. So before they proceed, there's a condition on their development. Um, are those conditions appealable?
Yes.
So the specific condition is appealable, or is their entire development plan appealable?
Um, so in terms of the appeals, uh, that you can appeal for not making a decision within the, the forty-five-day timeframe, you can appeal a condition, um, or you can seek, uh, clear, um, that the tribunal make a decision that the condition has met or has been met. So, um, and then you can, and you can appeal the decision itself. Yes.
So, maybe not tonight, but-
Okay.
I, I think it's really important that we understand the power of a community, uh, permit planning system.
Yes.
Whether or not it is truly appealable, once it is in place. So once it has gone through the process, once the public's had a chance to participate, once it's approved, is it, is, I understand the developer, development community can appeal the actual CPPS bylaw. Are you saying that the conditions that come out of the CPPS, so we're in an actual development?
Yes.
And we're making a condition that says ye- ye- X or Y?
Yeah.
That is actually appealable?
You, yes. Um, so you, in the bylaw, would, sorry, in your bylaw, you would have, these are the types of conditions that we can establish and, and then have some parameters around them. When it comes to approving the development permit, and you say, here's the five conditions you need to meet, they can challenge, say, well, this isn't applicable, right? For whatever reason, this is not, um, an appropriate use of this condition. So there is that opportunity to have the OLT make a decision on, is they can, has the condition been met, or is this a fair condition in, in relation to this specific application?
So, um, I think I was given a different answer from someone else. So just in, in terms of clarity, if I'm, uh, uh, if it's in the CPPS bylaw-
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that that condition, which was in an approved CPPS bylaw-
Yes.
Could still be challenged after we put a CPPS in?
In the, in the context of this, you're not putting this condition forward, uh, that's appropriate for this particular application, like, that can be challenged. I, I guess it also depends on how the condition is worded, like, something like the condition that you need to provide twelve, uh, two, two percent or ten percent or whatever, affordable units, that's a pretty uncontestable condition, right? Like, that's specific. Uh, other conditions may be a little bit more nuanced and can, could be challenged.
So I think that you've heard already tonight that there's gonna be lots of questions as we get to a CPPS bylaw.
Yes.
So I'll leave it there, but I, 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 I really think it's incredibly important we understand, because my other question is just around, um, making sure that what we are getting for our intent of being, having a CPPS. Very pleased to see it there, hopeful that i- it will allow us to build a stronger, better community in Midtown. But you referenced that we might rely on CPPS to get us more parkland.
Yes.
And I'd like to understand, not tonight, but as we go through this, s- are we gonna rely on them for, uh, what specifically are we gonna rely on them for? And what is the community, our DC charges, or other, uh, um, uh, access to other provincial funds going to cover? Um, because it can't give us everything. And it, I'm gonna phrase this, I'll age myself, but a Sears catalog, you know, you can't have everything at Christmas time with all the little tags. You know, there are things you can get. And so I think the public and council needs to be clear, not only what is prescribed that we could ask for, but what is the limit of that? And how does that form and shape, uh, Midtown? So I think more to come on that, but i- i- I think we need better detail on that.
Yep.
Um, so with that, I will, um, turn and say, Jeff, you've been very patient. Um, and, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, Jeff, we look forward to your, uh, content.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. Um, yes, I do appreciate we've been here for a while, but I think it's good to, uh, get through some of these questions and, um, and I hope that I, I suspect I will generate a number of more questions, but I will do my best to try and, uh, get through this efficiently. So I, I will be talking about built form and urban design primarily. Um, so first, it's important to highlight that Liverpool Oakville already has urban design policies and direction for the entire town that would continue to apply to Midtown as well. And the draft OPA proposes policies in addition to those, that build on those, that apply specifically to Midtown. So the proposed OPA covers all of the topics. Oh, let me get to the right slide here. Oh, too far. I gotta get back. Here we go. Oh, there we are. All right. So on this slide, um, these are all the topics that are included, uh, in the proposed, uh, OPA. Some of the topics here have garnered a lot of interest over the, the last no- the last while, such as height, density, parks, how the buildings will be an important part of an attractive public realm, just to name a few. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about height and density specifically in just a moment. Um, I will highlight a few of the other policies that are in this section. So tower separation has been something that we've discussed. So the policies are indicating that at least thirty-meter tower separation should happen at the base, um, and then that would increase, uh, as you get above the twenty-fifth story to thirty-five meters. So a building could set back as it goes up, um, to achieve that, that separation distance. There's also policies that, you know, say the towers should be set back from the building base by, by about five meters, as an example. There's others that talk about green roofs, which have been discussed earlier, are to be provided on buildings, including, uh, the roofs of podiums. And when you're talking about buildings, like, it could be mid-rise or even podiums that are on the ground, close to each other, there needs to be a minimum fifteen-meter separation. Um, and those are just some examples of the many policies that are in here that, that would guide the built form. Um, and in just a moment, I'll run through a theoretical example of how, that would maybe illustrate how these policies will work, work together when we look at a site. Speaking of density, the draft OPA has two schedules. One that indicates the minimum density on schedule L2, um, which indicates the minimum amount of development that is required to be developed on a site. And then we have a schedule L2 that indicates the maximum density permitted on a site. In this case, we're measuring density as a floor space index, or FSI, and I'll try and explain that a little bit more, once again, and i- in a minute. But essentially, FSI indicates how much floor space is either required in terms of the minimum, or is the most amount of floor space that you can provide on a site, in whatever configuration that you, uh, you may design in that. So the minimum density has been set to achieve the transit supportive densities, um, in the PPS, as well as the minimum density target of two hundred people and jobs per hectare, which support our urban structure and have been incorporated into the regional official plan, which is now part of our official plan. The maximum density has been set to support growth and development within Midtown for a long, you know, in the long term, certainly beyond twenty fifty-one. So a new schedule that has been added to the draft OPA is this building heights threshold, which, uh, Sabell has alluded to a number of times. There are two things on this schedule, uh, that are identified. First, it identifies minimum height, and Sabell talked about this essentially being five stories in most locations where residential uses are permitted, and it's two stories in the office employment and community commercial areas. The second thing that it identifies is this threshold height. So a threshold is really just a level or a point at which something else is triggered to happen. So in this case, when a development proposes building heights that are greater than the threshold height, it triggers the need for additional community benefits that are to be provided by the develop- developer in exchange for that permission, as we've been hearing about tonight. Um, however, and this is an important thing to remember, while you can exceed the building threshold through this process, you cannot exceed the maximum density at any time. The maximum density sets that, uh, upper limit in terms of, while you can go above the threshold for, to negotiate for additional community benefit, in no case will you, will those ever exceed the maximum density. So in this case, the building height threshold is not a maximum height. It's just the point at which the provision of these additional community benefits is triggered. It's the maximum density that still governs how much floor space can happen on a site. And then the purpose of this threshold, as we've heard, is really about leveraging those additional community benefits through a CPP bylaw. Again, as we've talked about quite a bit already. So now, let me move on and walk through a theoretical example to illustrate how some of all this might work together out on a site. So here's our theoretical parcel of land. So the parcel is about three-point-two hectares in size, or just shy of thirty-two thousand square meters. And let's say for this parcel that the OPA says that it's, it's urban core. It's got a, which you can get from Schedule L1, it's got a maximum density of six FSI, which we get from Schedule L2, and a minimum density of three FSI, which we get from Schedule L3. I may have those backwards, actually, but. All right. So as I mentioned earlier, FSI stands for floor space index. Essentially, what this means is that a floor space index of six represents six times the size of the parcel. So this is like stacking the parcel on top of each other six times. And since we know the size of the parcel itself, we simply multiply that number by six, and we can calculate the most amount of floor space that a development could have on this site, which in this case is just under one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand square meters. Similarly, when a minimum FSI of three is like stacking three of them on top of each other, we multiply by three, and we now have the minimum amount of floor space that we need to develop on the site. So of course, we don't want to develop a massive three-story building that encompasses the entire site. And there are other things that we need to consider. In this example, let's say our schedules are showing a conceptual park proposed for the site. We also see on Schedule L5, the transportation network, that there's a proposed street network that needs to be incorporated around and through our site, both in the form of widenings, or a new street, say, running through the middle of the site. This area, together, represents land that needs to be conveyed to the town before construction of new development can proceed. And then also looking at the active transportation schedule, which is Schedule L6, we see that there is an off-road active transportation connection identified through our site. And while the landowner does not need to convey land to the town for this connection, it does need to be accounted for in the design of the site. So now we can start laying out buildings on our site. So in this example, we've gone with a perimeter block concept, where the buildings front the public streets, and we create some semi-private space on the interior. And we break up the buildings along the frontages to allow access from the street into these spaces. And these spaces can be used for privately owned public space, or POPs. It could be possibly back-of-house functions, or for mid-block connections, like the one identified by the dash green line in the OPA. And here's an example of where the town's urban design directions, and this is just an example, there are many of them, to help inform this design, so, which requires that fifteen-meter spacing between buildings. So we ensure that the breaks that we're putting in are at least this wide. So then using these footprints, we, we've determined that we need, on this site specifically, we need mid-rise buildings that are at least eight to nine stories in height to achieve the minimum required density. Again, this represents the minimum amount of development we would need on this site to meet the minimum FSI. And you can see that the GFA of the concept shown is just slightly larger than the minimum GFA we calculated earlier. And I will point out, we have represented green roofs on these buildings by coloring the roof green. But it's to represent that there are standards in terms of sustainability that we would also incorporate into these buildings, such as geothermal, potentially, that was talked about earlier. So the proposed policies, as Sabell has mentioned, indicate that a number of streets need to contain active frontages, retail frontage. So we've just added that in and illustrated that a little bit with some wider sidewalks and street trees in, within the right-of-way. And now, let's look at the built form that can result by developing this site to the maximum density. So this is the minimum density. What could we do if we used the same and got to the maximum FSI? Something I think we need to keep in mind is that the town's urban design direction for buildings greater than twelve stories restrict the floor plate size. And then they also say the podiums or the base can be no higher than approximately six stories. So pay particular attention to what happens on this local street in the middle. Currently, it has eight stories on either side, and this could go up to twelve stories, which is the maximum for a mid-rise building in the town's urban design direction. So this requirement does mean that we get a podium tower type of building when you start to get into these higher gross floor areas. And so this concept shows one way that the site could be developed. In this example, we end up with seven towers, and the resulting building heights range from twenty-four stories to thirty-five stories. I think what this, what this regime does is it tries to incent a development to keep as much of the development as they can kind of under that building threshold, so that when they do go above that threshold, it's because they're required to provide additional community benefit on top of it. So it becomes a transaction at that point. So there is a little bit of an incentive to not go too tall with one building and keep the others lower, and try and balance the development across the site. So the GFA concept shown here is just a little bit less than the maximum. And so this shows that it doesn't exceed the maximum density. So a few other things I'll highlight here is that each tower is separated from each other by at least thirty-five meters here. But like I said, some of them, if you're below twenty-five stories, it can be, go down to thirty-meter separation. And this is where a tower could be stepped back to increase that separation on the higher heights. And as you can see, again, on that street in the middle that I was talking about earlier, now we only have six stories actually close to the street, because the policies also call for a minimum five-meter step back at that podium height. And what this does is help to reduce the impact of taller buildings at the street level, allow more sunlight to penetrate, for example, and really allow sunlight to hit some of those open spaces and public streets a little more. Finally, let's look at what the building threshold, how, applying the building threshold, what it would do to this site. So, on our theoretical site, we have a building threshold of twenty stories. So the floors highlighted in the orange color represent the floor space above the building height threshold. And again, through a CPPS, the developer would then need to provide additional community benefit, either cash and lieu, or an in-kind benefit, to be able to build the additional, we've calculated it out here, just over fifty thousand square meters of floor space above the building height threshold. So this is about the equivalent to about one-point-five FSI on this site, or about five hectares of land, if you took that floor space and spread it out flat on the ground. So it's important to note that the proportion of development that may be subject to a community benefit will be different from site to site, and dependent on how the development applicant chooses to use the range of GFA they are provided in the min and max density allocations. And it's also important to note that the benefit will be commensurate with the additional gross floor area, not measured by the number of stories. So it's based on how much floor area you're providing, not necessarily the number of stories that you're going above. In terms of the community benefits, this is, there's a long list of facilities, services, and matters that could be provided in exchange for exceeding the threshold heights. These are ones that are already established within the livable Oakville Plan as part of the Section 37 bonusing. And these would continue to apply in this case. And then the Midtown OPA as well, has other specific benefits to Midtown that, that could also be a part of the, of the negotiation. And this includes things like, things that we've already talked about, like parkland, improvement to parks, affordable housing, green buildings, and other things. So, as Sabell mentioned earlier, this OPA sets the stage for a CPPS. And through that system, the town is able to implement the policies of the OP when approving a development permit to address all the external matters of a site, and ensure that the public realm is provided and designed appropriately. And there's a lot of detail on the slide that you can read, and then, but really, it allows, there's some flexibility and discretion, as Sabell has already mentioned, within that as well, that, that we, that can be used and when developing the CPP bylaw, to allow for some minor variations as council may want, may decide to permit through that. So now I'll move on to what I know is also a topic of interest, and that's yields and some of the overall concepts. So, this slide is the bonus slide, and it, hopefully it gives a little more information, but it may, again, I acknowledge it may not give all the detail that, say, Councilor Adams and others might be looking for. But it really talks about how we go from the gross floor area that we showed in the theoretical example, and how we can determine people and jobs, and how it's estimated from this gross floor area. So, we start with our total GFA. Right off the top, we'll allocate fifteen percent of that GFA towards common areas. And this would be lobbies, hallways, stairwells, mechanical rooms, and, and other things. This is, another way of describing this is a building efficiency factor, in terms of you can't allocate all of the GFA to units themselves, because there are these common spaces and functional spaces that need to make, that are needed to make a building work. And this does not result in any residents or jobs. So we've talked about the eighteen percent office and retail area, the non-residential uses. So eighteen percent of that GFA, according to that policy, gets attributed to non-residential uses. And then the remainder, which would be about sixty-seven percent, is allocated to residential units. In terms of the office retail area, we've applied assumption of about thirty square meters per employee. I will say that this is smaller than, historically, some of the numbers have shown, like, say, in the DC background study, which have numbers that are saying existing space in certain uses of, say, for example, thirty-seven square meters. But we're feeling, because this is an urban context, it may be, the amount of space needed for each employee might be less than we might be seeing currently. And, and heading in that direction, we're seeing that the space used up by an employee tends, is starting to get smaller, particularly in some of these urbanized spaces. So we have used the assumption of thirty square meters per employee to account for the jobs that would be created through the retail at the ground floor, through some of, some offices, and maybe, you know, potentially, some places that provide common workspace areas for those that are working at home as a business, for example, that we've seen. So if you use that assumption, in this theoretical example, we have eleven-hundred-and-forty-seven estimated jobs. So similar for the residential side of it, we're using an assumption of fifty square meters per resident. And this assumption incorporates a number of factors that we've been talking about in terms of unit mix. You know, how many large units, how many small units, what are the size of those units? And then how many people per unit are we seeing in those respective sizes? So, using, we have used, for example, in one way to, to develop this, or to verify that the fifty square meters is a fair, a fair assumption, we've incorporated PPUs from our DC background study, unit mixes, similar to, you know, requiring a thirty-five percent, sixty-five percent, as well as using average unit sizes that we have in some of the studies, say, for example, in the hospital district. And using those, we've, it verifies that fifty square meters per resident is a, is a, is a reasonable number to use. And so, that's the assumption that we've used in these calculations. And in this case, that would result in two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one residents. And of course, you combine those, you get just over thirty-seven-hundred estimated people and jobs in this theoretical example. So, when you do this exercise for all the various blocks within Midtown, using similar assumptions, we can estimate possible resident and job yields in all of Midtown. And this is at, this is if, so, for example, the top line is at the minimum FSI. So if every parcel in, in, in Midtown developed only at the minimum, we estimate that we would result in twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five people and jobs in Midtown. So it is essentially just over the minimum. If everybody developed at the minimum, and we know development of all the property in Midtown would take a very long time, we are still confident that even if everybody came in at the minimum, we would be meeting our minimum target of, I think, twenty thousand in people and jobs. In terms of, at the bottom line, we have our maximum FSI. And so when you apply the, the algorithm that I just talked about to that, we estimate that you get just under fifty-three thousand people and jobs across Midtown. Again, realize, this is a theoretical number if all of the property in Midtown maximized to the fullest potential their community benefit to reach the maximum FSI. That's the, the upper number that you could get. So then, of course, that begs the question, well, what if nobody took advantage of this threshold and went above the threshold? If everybody did that and developed as far high as they could up to that, you know, that threshold height, what would we get? And we estimate that would be about fifty thousand, five-hundred and people and jobs in Midtown. So there's a difference there of about one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand square meters. And this, and it would be, this is, sorry, I just lost my space here. So this would be the amount of floor space that the town would have an opportunity to negotiate for additional community benefits that we've been talking about. But it's through the development of the CPP bylaw that we would need to determine what the value of that GFA would be, and how it translates into a community benefit that's commensurate with the amount of GFA that's getting provided. So to conclude this segment of the presentation, here's an illustration of our massing model for Midtown, where all the development is either at or below the height thresholds. So all of these buildings are at a twenty stories, twelve, or ten stories, based on the building threshold schedule that have been assigned to it. And in this illustration, the maximum site density for all sites is not achieved. This is just where they would get if they built right to the threshold. In this illustration, we show a possible scenario where site, site density is at or near the maximum allocated. So this is that theoretic, that in theory, if everybody developed to that maximum GFA, this is where we would, where we would end up, or it's one way that we could end up there. The tallest building in this scenario is forty-five stories. So this height is a product of implementing the various design and built form policies, as well as the maximum density. And it does account for lands that would be dedicated for public purposes, such as parks and roads. So the total GFA that is attributed to the orange areas would be granted only on the condition that commensurate community benefits in cash or in-kind are provided. And again, we've talked about what these community benefits could include. But the actual community benefit will be determined through the development permit approval process. And I'm sure we've generated even more questions that we'd be happy to answer at this point, before I move on to next steps.
You are correct. Counselor Daddick, you are first up.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm out of sequence on this, but I have several questions, starting with the overall description for the Midtown Oakville. I forget page, I think it's page one. You indicated it's approximately one-hundred-and-three hectares. Why are we not delineating that only forty-three hectares are developable? I think it's important we set that from the onset, because somebody looking at one-hundred-and-three would look at a totally different lens, as opposed to what's actually developable.
I think Sabell will take a shot at this one.
Yeah, so we actually, in the description, acknowledge that some of the land in, I'm not seeing the counselor. There we go, okay. Some of the land is developable, and some of it is not. We didn't, we didn't specifically say, you know, the X number is not developable because it's in the utility corridor, or it's part of the natural area, and so on. But there is an acknowledgement that not, not the full one-hundred-and-three hectares is fully developable, and, and that that is acknowledged in the, in that preamble.
But again, I have a problem, that's such a large, we're talking sixty hectares difference between what's developable and what we've indicated, the entire land being one-hundred-and-three.
Yeah, and just to be clear, when we Yeah, and just to be clear, when we speak about the 43 hectares, that's kind of the after lands have been allocated for streets and parks. So the actual developable site is larger than 43, but when you take out all of the lands that we hope to have for those public facilities, you're down to 43 that stays private.
Okay, fair point. But again, why wouldn't we delineate what the size of the property is before and what is developable before those streets and all the other things are taken out of the mix?
Point taken, thank you.
Okay, thanks. The, the issue of FSI versus height, I think for the majority of the residents I'm aware of are going to have a hard time wrapping their head around, they're going to immediately go to what's the maximum height I can expect on this property. So I think the messaging, and I appreciate the way you did it this evening, that was very helpful, but how we translate that and get that across to the public because invariably their go-to is, oh, you guys can only go to 20 stories, and yet you're doing this, this, and this. So as I say, I think we got a huge messaging issue to take place in terms of educating the public, in terms of what FSI is and how you were right at those figures. The other thing is, when you showed that diagram, and some of them were orange and some of them were not, and I was looking along the Cornwall frontage, why are some of the ones towards the western boundary not having orange associated? Is it the U's?
Through you, Madam Chair. So some of the buildings that you see on Cornwall towards the, I guess that would be the west side, towards the 16 Mile Creek, those are, are you wanting to go on the west side? So let's just make it pretty straightforward. So there are, north of the tracks, generally the building threshold height is 20 stories. South of the tracks, it's 12 and 10, depending on what, what section you're in. So where you see orange, that's where in this model, the height of the building exceeds that threshold. It could be 10 or it could be 12. So if you see a building that does not have an orange component to it, it's because that building is at or under that building threshold height. So for example, if it's 12 and you're seeing a mid-rise building that has no orange on top of it, it's because that building height in this model is 12 stories and not 13.
I see. Okay, okay, good, thank you. And the decision, once we indicate the community benefits, once it's outlined in terms of what we deem is a community benefit and the value to it, does the decision to go above the threshold still lie with council, or is that similar to what the previous presentation said, you haven't really drilled down to that decision-making process as yet?
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe it's the latter part, it's still to be determined.
That's what I thought. Okay, okay. The other thing is, quite a few times throughout the bylaw or the draft plan, it stipulates or it indicates in a timely manner. And I guess we need to qualify what in a timely manner is, and the reason I say that, having seen previous OMB, OLT, whatever you want to call it, hearings, their interpretation may differ than ours. So the more clear we can be in what we consider a timely manner works to our benefit, I would assume. So making a broad statement in a timely manner, maybe we have to wrap our heads around, you know, best case scenario, five years, you know, that sort of thing, so that we're not laying ourselves open for something that's going to be developed. And even though we expected it in a timely manner, we're going to have a hard time pinning someone down for that. Okay, that was one of the, the other one I had was, when we're talking about the parking for the various buildings, and I see shared parking will be encouraged, what is shared parking? And how do they, what if one person doesn't want to do it? And you're doing it to sort of give people the maximum amount of parking?
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe shared parking, and my colleagues can correct me if I, if I go astray, but I believe it's the idea of that a business and say visitor parking can be shared between, so visitor parking for the residents can be shared with a commercial business, or if there's, you know, if the timing of the, of the parking needs for a residential use is overnight, and then they, they may use their car during the day, then that parking space is freed up to be used by the business during, during the day, so that you're not ending up with a number of parking stalls that may sit empty during certain periods of time, whether it's overnight or during the day.
Okay, and are we providing sufficient parking for, and I'm thinking for the businesses to be viable in that particular area, not just from the walk-to component for the people who reside in the area, but the people who may want to come into the area and frequent the retail development? I'm just concerned when I was reading that, you know, you don't want lit by parking, you don't want this, you know, do they have to provide something underground then?
I'll let Sabella answer this one because she's thought about the parking policy more than I.
So just, I guess through you, Chair, a couple of comments. So we don't actually put in prescribed number of parking and things like that in the OP, it would be something that would be in the bylaw, but we also have to remember.
Okay, fair enough.
But, but, sorry, I just wanted to remind council, through changes to the Planning Act, because Midtown is a major transit station area, our bylaws will not be able to identify a minimum parking amount. So it will be, the amount of parking that comes, we would definitely be able to identify maximums, not minimums. So it will be up to the proponent in terms of determining what is the right ratio of parking below that maximum that would be appropriate for the site.
Going to be a difficult one to struggle with. The other thing is, on implementation measures under FII, the extension and improvement of the Oakville Gold Rail Platform relocation of the transit terminal, we're obviously talking about MetroLinks.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we are, it is, it's always been in the plans and in the town's intention to, to shift that if possible, shift the bus loop and transit station to the other side of Trafalgar. Notwithstanding, we understand MetroLinks has indicated recently that they do not have an intention to do that at this time.
Okay, because that, that is my biggest concern. They don't have the best reputation, at least in my estimation, for delivering on what they say they're going to do. So the fact they've said they're not, even less than any more possibility of that becoming a reality. The other thing, and maybe it was raised earlier, under the community planning permit system, the town may, in a bylaw, again, why would we not say shall in a bylaw?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll attempt to answer this, and maybe Sabella can step in and provide a little more clarity, but I believe the intent of the OP policies is simply to enable the community planning permit system. So that's where the word "may" comes in, because it allows the town to do what that is, what, you know, whatever that statement says. And it'll really be in the, in the CPP bylaw where the "shall" comes in, in terms of what's actually required. And I know it, it says the town shall implement a CPPS, but I think the danger there is, if we, if we get an OPA approved that says shall, it's now binding on the town to actually do that in a CPPS. And I'm, you know, maybe there's a scenario where that actually doesn't come to fruition for some reason. May allows, it allows that flexibility that, yes, the CPPS is enabled and can do this, but not required to, which is, the town may not be required to do it, and that's what a shall might get you into.
Okay, thank you. Point well taken, appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Dedak. Counselor McNeese?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation, Jeff. Just flipping over to the chart page, I think it's 55 of the deck there. Just have a couple of questions. So first, starting with the, I just sort of estimated the people and jobs per hectare based on 100 hectares. So we're saying minimum FSI, we'd be looking at about 253 people and jobs per hectare. So I know we're required to do about 100, or sorry, 200. Is there an advantage of saying that the minimum is 253? Like, is this coming from our economists' projections or, because I mean, it does say we have to plan to a minimum, but it doesn't say we have to plan to more than a minimum.
Oh, through you, Madam Chair. My initial reaction to that is, when you're establishing the minimum FSI's, part of the, of keeping things clear is to use whole numbers or half numbers, right? So a minimum FSI of say, two or 1.5, and it so happens based on the sites that that generates 25,000. If you wanted to fine tune those minimum FSI's, you might get into very specific minimum FSI's in certain, in certain areas like 1.735, if you're really targeting just, you know, you want to hit the number exactly 20,000 people and jobs. And I will say that estimating people and jobs, it's, it's really a range that, you know, you come in with, because as we've talked about, there's many assumptions that go into estimating people and jobs, right? In terms of how much space they may take up, those type of things. So I think it's a combination of those things that result in a number that's higher, and I think it's important to be higher than the minimum that we're targeting with the minimum FSI's, because we don't want to run the danger of putting in a minimum FSI that may not get us to the minimum if everybody, you know, is, oh, I just want to do the minimum.
Okay, then, sort of going down more towards the threshold height and maximum FSI, so about 50,000, you know, give or take, so about 500 FSI, or sorry, 500 people and jobs per hectare. Based on our sort of economist forecast of, I think it was 29,900, so this does seem quite a bit higher. Any, any sort of, how do we know if it's too high, sort of?
Through you, Madam Chair, I will say that, so like I tried to emphasize, this 50,000 people and jobs is estimated if every site developed to its maximum, that's what, the number that you would result in. We know that all of Midtown, every single site in Midtown is not going to develop that way by 2051. So it's difficult to say, well, hey, you're planning for 50,000 when we're only seeing 29,900 by 2051. Developing Midtown, for one, will proceed beyond that, and these policies are intended to, well, certainly planned at 2051, also, according to the provincial planning statement, also planned beyond that time horizon, which is what the PPS encourages municipalities to do. So really, the 50,000 kind of sets that theoretical maximum that could be accommodated in Midtown, whereas the work that we're seeing from, from our consultants is saying, based on our analysis, the amount of growth you would see by 2051 is only 29,900. But Midtown has the ability to accommodate more over time. And not everyone will necessarily maximize the FSI through this community benefits trade off, and so some may be less than the maximum. So we may never see this 50,000, this is just a theoretical maximum if everybody went to the fullest extent.
Okay, and then just one more question on the chart. So the, the difference between the 2.6 million and 2.7 million GFA, so the 126 square meters. So I'm just trying to understand, so that's the amount where we could get community benefit out of, is that fair to say? Because I'm just looking at that compared to the illustration, your second illustration, which has the orange, which shows the additional heights that we would get community benefit from. Am I understanding that correctly? Because it just seems like it's a lot more than 126 square meters that we'd be getting community benefit from.
Through you, Madam Chair. So part of when we develop the threshold height maximum, what we're doing is building the biggest buildings we can get under that, under that threshold. And some of those areas, that can be a mid-rise building that can have bigger floor plates. And like I indicated, when you go above 12 stories, all of a sudden, your podium, which has, can have similar floor plate sizes, can only go as high as six stories. And then, so essentially, a 12-story building could be the same as a 20-story building in a podium tower format. And so as you go up, that's why it, we've had this discussion when we were looking at the model as well, you know, is that 126,000? That's the, I would say, the minimum amount you might have to work with, whereas in the example that we showed, there could be a little bit more that's available. It's all based on every site that comes in and what the configuration of the development is, and how much of that exceeds that threshold. That's the piece that you can play with and negotiate for additional community benefit. And that's why I tried to explain that there is maybe an incentive for a developer to try and put as much floor space below that maximum height to minimize the amount of additional community benefit they may need to be part of, or provide in order to get the development they're looking at.
Okay, yeah, I guess we want to make sure that incentive's not, not there for them to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your point, Counselor, and I think Sabella has a point that she would like to add.
I was just going to say, it goes both ways. So we have this land use schedule that shows parkland on certain sites. So in this instance, we may say, hey, you, you're required to provide X amount of parkland per our Parkland Education bylaw. We actually would like to see more parkland here. Why don't you build taller, shrink your building footprint and, and provide for the parkland? So this is where you are negotiating and you're in partnership with each other and saying, in some instances, we would like to see the taller buildings so that we can get the parkland that we would like to have in this particular area. So it, it works both ways.
Okay, and I guess, I mean, how do we know we have the right, because I mean, I think what's important with the CPPS is that threshold of where does the sort of community benefit kick in? So it's, we sort of got it at, I guess technically, a certain height, you know, around the 20 stories, depending on the parcel. But like, how do we know, should it be 18, should it be 16, or, you know?
Through you, Madam Chair, the rationale for where the heights, the threshold heights ended up being is, is a lot related to what's currently in effect. So in our current policies, in the Urban Core, for example, you can go to 20 stories, and then the idea was that you would go, if you wanted to go above, it would be Section 37 bonusing and a negotiation for what does the town receive in exchange for that additional height? So go back to what Gabe's remarks were at the beginning, we're starting at what we currently have and building from that. So now, you know, Urban Core was expanded across, we're expanding that use across, that's why the 20-story threshold went with it. And then in some of the other areas where we're looking for, we may want transition down to, to existing neighborhoods, that's where the threshold is a little bit lower to coincide with some of the other heights, like 12 stories that were in, that are in the current official plan. So that's a little bit of the rationale for where those threshold heights came from and are starting from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McNeese. We have at least two more, and I know that I have questions, and I want to be considerate that we have been going, and it's almost nine o'clock. So I am going to call a 10-minute recess for people's personal needs if necessary, and so we'll be back at, at 9:11. Thanks very much. Okay, so next up is Counselor McNeese. Oh, no, just finished with you? Okay, we're good. Counselor Chisholm.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to get my head wrapped around these community benefits and looking at the movement of levels on these, on these buildings. So is Jeff still there? Jeff's on, up there?
He is, he is still here.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff, for the presentation, but I'm trying to understand, and maybe you can help me understand too, with these community benefits. I think it was slide 52, do you think we could slide back to slide 52? Okay. Portable housing, public service facility, parkland improvements to parks, purple garden green buildings, of a transit, okay. So what I'm understanding, so I'm trying to understand how that equates to getting increase in their heights based on community benefits. Do we have enough in our toolbox or land to do some of this? I like the word bonusing, relation to 37, Section 37, but do we have the ability to bring these on if there's negotiation going on with a private land order?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe that we do, and I think the details of how much we would get in exchange for a certain amount of floor space that goes above the threshold is something that I think we still need to determine and do the studies on, in terms of those facilities matters and, and other things that are negotiated. It may be that some of these are not applicable to a certain site, for example, like, there may not be an appetite to, you know, if they're providing public art, to give them, you know, another, you know, 10 stories, for example. So the key word is always, it's got to be commensurate. So it, I guess it, we would determine that on a site-by-site basis in terms of what the development that's being proposed, how much is going over the threshold, and whether that, you know, that is an equivalent amount to what we might be asking for, what they might be looking to provide. So those are some of the discussions that would come later. This just sets, I would say, gives you an example of what's already in our OP that we had been considering as community benefits for Section 37, that we would then also apply in this new CPPS tool. And I'd like to point out, it includes, but is not necessarily limited to these things.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be difficult, I'm having with this, we don't have that much land there. I mean, as the Counselor's article was indicating, you know, we've got 43 hectares of developable land. I'm trying to understand if there was a trade-off in community benefits. Okay, the question would be, community benefits, do they maintain in that, in Midtown, or can they be used in other parts of the municipality?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. The intent is that these community benefits would be realized directly in Midtown, because that's the community that they, they would hopefully benefit. And it's the additional people that's coming because of them going above a certain threshold. It's because there's more people coming that we want those additional community benefits, and we want it to apply to them. So applying it, say, up in Palermo, when you've got an increase over a threshold here in Midtown, doesn't necessarily make sense. So I think the intent is very much so that these community benefits would, would be provided to benefit the residents coming to Midtown.
Okay, I'm glad, that's a good answer. With respect to, say, for example, there was a trade-off, a negotiation with respect to increasing from the threshold of 20, 20 stories now up to, say, 45 stories, that's a lot of stories, and they're going to build a library for us, okay? Where would that go? Where, what land would we put a library on? And within that 42 or 43 hectares of developable land?
Through you, Madam Chair. The intent would be that that library would be incorporated into the development. So if they're building a podium and tower, ideally on the ground floor, or the first few stories would incorporate that library that would be provided. And in exchange for, you know, using space within their podium, they would get additional residential space above the building threshold in return. So that would be the intent of how something, say, like a public library, that's where it would go, would be within the development itself.
Okay, so the intent is, I understand the intent is to have it within their own development areas for these community benefits. Okay, so let's look, let's look at parkland. If, knowing what we have right now, it would seem to be limited on getting more parkland, and this, again, a developable 43 hectares. Is that something that is doable, or we can't, it's not enough for us to do it? Put new parkland?
Through you, Madam Chair. So what we've identified on the land use schedule is conceptual parks. And as Sabell pointed out, that's about 12 hectares. So that is more parkland than we can get just through regular parkland dedication requirements. So in order to try and achieve some more of that parkland, it would happen on, let's say, a site came in, say, for example, the example that I showed, there was a park in a corner. That, that park size may be larger than the minimum requirement that they would otherwise be required to provide, for example. But because we've identified these locations, it's in those locations where we would be willing to have that negotiation to say, hey, if you're providing more parkland than you might otherwise be required to, we will negotiate and give you additional density, or additional height that you might not have otherwise gotten if you just stuck to the threshold. So it would happen, again, on that development parcel, where we've identified where we think parkland should go. But it could, it could change, you know, depending on the applications that come in. And they may say, well, we want to give you parkland, and we are proposing it in this location. That's something that we can consider.
Given your experience, Jeff, with dealing with developers and so forth, on these community benefits, has there been any, any agreements with respect to community benefits based on their development? Has there ever been within the town and private developers?
So through you, Madam Chair, yes, there have been a number of Section 37 bonusing agreements that have been implemented throughout the town.
And what, can you give me one specific one that, put you in the spot, Jeff?
Director Charles, can you help out?
I will look to my colleagues to help me out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The one that comes to mind immediately is the, the site on Trafalgar Road at Threshing, which is where the town is looking to secure space for a library. We had secured that through the agreement that we had made with, with Brand Haven as part of a settlement.
Okay, so that's within their development, which I said on the OPL, so that's part of the, of the development itself, yes. Okay, that's good. It's good to understand. Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Counselor Chisholm. Counselor Giddings.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. The, looking at Page 56, one of the concepts within the threshold heights. In the OPA, it talks about, "Development shall be compatible with residential neighborhood south of Cornwall." What do we mean when we say compatible?
Through you, Madam Chair. I know, well, for example, our, the livable Oakville Plan does have a section that talks about, you know, what compatibility means with respect to development, being compatible to a development. Part of what, I would say, part of that is, in terms of the Midtown specifically, is that there's a step down in height. So generally speaking, the most of the height in Midtown is intended north of the tracks, and then south of Cornwall, below the tracks, we have a thin piece of, you know, we have a thin land between Cornwall and the tracks. And I think the intent is to transition down from the taller heights north of the tracks down to the community south of the tracks. So that's one way that compatibility would be, would be generated. But it's also about how you'd, you know, you'd design the buildings along Cornwall, for example, that it becomes, it's an attractive place as well, that benefits south of the tracks, or south of Cornwall as much as it benefits north of Cornwall. As I think we've discussed many times, you know, we would not like to see right at the edge of Cornwall, you know, have the height go straight up, right, to have a low, low density community to the south, and then really high, kind of like the, you know, what we're seeing, you know, being, potentially being proposed north of the tracks. So there would be a stepping down of heights, right, as we go down. And we've attempted to show that in some of the models as well.
All right, and the second piece under that same heading. Commercial areas and active parkland will serve the needs of residents and workers in Midtown Oakville, as well as the surrounding area. So I guess this will come up at our Park Rec Library Master Plan discussions. There will be, obviously, a different threshold in terms of so many hectares per thousand people and so on. It's going to be, obviously, a very different community.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. Midtown is envisioned to be different in terms of park requirements. The Parks Plan endeavors to, to go in that direction and identify, you know, what urban squares and plazas are, versus, say, some of the parks that we may see in some of the other areas of Oakville. But it, we're really taking our direction from the Parks Plan in terms of the types of park spaces that we're proposing, and trying to identify space and sizes that meet the hierarchy that the Parks Plan is, has put forward. And so we're trying to build on that as well. But it's really the Parks Plan, I think, that will really dictate the plan for these spaces. We're just trying to allocate space for them and show where they might be within this OPA.
All right, and hazard lands and flood hazards. Development shall be directed away from areas of hazardous lands where there's an unacceptable risk. That will be identified through the upcoming Conservation-Halten meetings and discussions, and their study?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. I believe that is one of the topics that they will, they will address. They're really looking, in Midtown, it's identified as a spill hazard rather than a flood hazard necessarily, and they're looking, understanding that, you know, we have growth areas, strategic growth areas, and that may coincide with some of these spill areas that they're starting to map. There's, they are developing policies, and this is something they will probably present better than I can convey tonight, so I will defer to their explanation, but essentially to develop a risk-based approach. So where the risk is lower, you can permit different, you know, permit development of a certain type, whereas if the risk is higher, the idea is to, you know, to ensure that what's being proposed there or developed there is safe and accessible to everybody.
And Section C covers that well, after watching what was occurring in Florida until way too, way too late this morning. Development and site alteration shall not be permitted within areas that would be rendered inaccessible to people and vehicles. Makes it pretty clear. So in those areas, will that determine where some of the lower heights, lower densities may be, depending on what the conservation authority comes up with in terms of spill hazards and flood hazards?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not ready to comment on that specifically. I think it's best to wait and see what Conservation-Halten is presenting in terms of their policies, and ask those questions at that time, and they will hopefully be able to give you a better answer than I might be able to tonight.
Good stuff, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Giddings. Counselor Elgar.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just back up a little bit on clarification. I think, and I'm happy what I heard, but on a recent podcast, it was stated that, in fact, the town, the existing OP has no limits. So can you just confirm that our official plan that we did have, did have limits for Midtown?
Through you, Madam Chair. The, that phrasing, no limits, is within the bonusing policies. And so while there is no limit for the height that council may decide to provide through Section 37 bonusing, that's what that, that phrase refers to. It's, so there's no limit to what council can negotiate in terms of additional height, but that would be done through a Section 37 bonusing negotiation. There just happens to be no cap to what council may consider, but it would be ultimately, in the existing policies, based on what council determines is an appropriate amount of height to grant through the Section 37 bonusing.
So was there, was 20 stories ever, wasn't there 20 stories in there somewhere?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. So the, the base height that you can build to without Section 37 bonusing in the urban core area is 20 stories. If you want to go above that, Section 37 bonusing kicks in.
Okay, I, I understand that, but I think a lot of people misinterpret that we were not, as a council, as a staff, we did a terrible job of not having any height limits. And I, I think that really has messed up a few people, wondering what were we doing? So I thank you for that. Jeff, or whoever, will the OP, the OPA be defensible at the OLT when the developers come to us?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't think we would recommend an OP that wouldn't be defensible at the OLT. But that's, that's our goal, and that's what we're aiming to, to provide for you when we do come back.
And you, and you feel that's what you have now? You have got that, what you have written right now, this OPA is that way, that it is totally defensible?
I would say that we are at a point now where we're proposing, we've made a proposal, a proposed OPA, we are looking for feedback and comment, and will continue to revise and improve, and with the hopes of coming, with a recommendation, with something that is, as you described. I'm not ready to say just yet that we're at that point, but that is certainly our, our goal.
Well, I appreciate that. And I must, I'd like to compliment you on the FSI, which honestly, I don't think a lot of people in Oakville understand at all. I think you did a fantastic job of presenting it tonight. And I do hope it goes on the website to explain to people what it is you're talking about. So, you know, if we could do that clip of how it works, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Elgar, and you got lots of nods around the table on that one, Jeff. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands, so I will reserve the right to do my own questions now. I just want to go back to a statement you said about they may not maximize their FSI. And so can you just help us understand, so they meet the threshold, they might, they as a developer are going to do an analysis of whether or not the community benefit through the CPPS is worth going to get additional height? But when you make the statement, "They may not maximize," is it really just contingent on, well, what would I have to give to get that height? Or extra GFA?
Through you, Madam Chair. I mean, that's certainly part of their, the thinking that, that I assume a developer would go through. So when I say they may not maximize, they have the choice of what, what to propose on their site. We've set a minimum and a maximum, and they would ideally come with, that's, their permission is somewhere in between there, knowing that if they go above a certain height, we will be requiring a benefit. So that's all part of their thinking in terms of, you know, what they want to propose. If we know, and it gives them a little bit more certainty about, okay, if you go above this threshold, this is the, you know, the amount of community benefit we would be asking for as a town for that additional height, they need to do the workings on their end in terms of what they intend to do with the site, the development that they're looking at, and is it worth doing that? And I, you know, I would hope we would get to a point where, yeah, there is a benefit to if they provide things, because we would like to have these additional community benefits. If we get to the right, the right values for the community benefits and the right trade-offs, that it wouldn't necessarily be seen as a full disincentive to go above, but there'd actually be, yeah, we're willing to go and do that and give you this extra community benefit, because it makes, also makes sense for us to go to that, to do that.
So thank you for that explanation. I just want to transition to, back to parkland. Can you just clarify? We, even when we put in the CPPS, they, a development application would still have to give us parkland dedication?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay, and so we are going for that additional amount, which we previously were fortunate to have, but had taken away from us. So that would be, we get the base amount from the, the parkland dedication, and then we're trying to go to get more green space for this community. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. On, we received a letter today concerned about north of the tracks and the implications for potential maximum FSI and heights that that might drive on the northern community. How has that been factored into your, your thoughts around FSI and shadowing?
Through you, Madam Chair. We certainly have looked at shadowing, and I think what this, what, the way this OPA is structured is that you do have the flexibility when an application comes in to then talk about, to look at, you know, during the review of that specific application, okay, are there shadowing impacts that may fall, maybe it's north of the QEW, right? And are there ways on the site that's being developed to maybe move some of the height further south and have that there to minimize the height on the north side of the site that might have, be having the impact of the shadowing impact? And so when you're able to set a max, you know, a floor area amount to work with, that gives you the flexibility to say, okay, maybe we'll accept a little more height on this part of the site if it means that we're not getting the height on the other, on the other side, because we have shadow concerns in a certain location, yet the developer can still maintain the amount of floor space that they would be developing through that, I would call sculpting of, of the application.
So thank you for that explanation. So there is going to be a significant amount of discussion. So there is going to be a, a significant amount of discussion, and it has to be done in 45 days, I understand, if we have a CPPS, on that built form. So just from a process perspective, that means there's a pre-consultation to make sure that they're crystal clear on form and, and all of these things they must achieve? Because I can imagine we're in that 45-day window and trying to do this negotiation. So is that all done prior to the 45-day period in a CPPS?
I'll defer to my colleague, Sabell. She has a little more knowledge on the CPPS functioning.
So in the, the OPA, we have included development permit applications as being something that requires a pre-consultation meeting. So there is the opportunity to have that pre-consultation meeting, identify what needs to be provided in terms of a complete application, and to talk about those kind of matters that, that need to be addressed as part of their actual development permit application. And there are policies in the OPA that speak to minimizing shadow impacts, so, so that's something that would be considered.
Okay, thank you very much. There's been a question about regulations. So the, one of the slides had a series of, I think it's designing Midtown built form. There's policies, if you will, and, and I may have used the word regulations inappropriately, but those policies, are they law once we pass this OPA, and are they appealable? So in other words, we're relying on those policies to shape and form Midtown. Are they subject to appeal, or are they law? Sorry, first question, are they law?
Well, so the, the official plan is not law. It's a policy document. This policy document will then be translated into a bylaw, which is law. And, and once those provisions are approved and in effect, then they are in effect. Can these policies be appealed? Can the provisions in the bylaw be appealed? Yes. So going back to the question before, is this defensible? Those are the things that we need to take into consideration is, you know, are we putting in policies that we can defend and, and have them be approved? Yes.
So I think what I want to understand even more, though, is that, so we have a, on a built form perspective, there's, there's this designing Midtown. We're relying on designing Midtown to help shape that community. It's not specifically in the OPA. It's attached as an appendix. Is that how it works?
So there is reference to the design guidelines that would help to inform the development of the development, of the bylaw. So we would, we would take information from design guidelines and public realm studies, and that would inform the provisions that we would actually put in the bylaw. And then once that's in effect, that bylaw is in effect, and that is law. So it, those guidelines will inform it, and then when making decisions on a particular development permit application, it will be evaluated against the provisions in that bylaw, and, you know, and that evaluation will be informed by the language in the guideline document.
So is there an argument to be made that we should put more of that language in the OPA to protect, protect and give certainty to the community that's very concerned, will we actually get these things?
From my opinion, and, and what I would recommend is, you know, preparing the guideline document and determining what, and that guideline document needs to be a, a standard in the bylaw, and establish it there. You don't want to have that kind of prescriptive language in an official plan. It's, that, that kind of language is best in a bylaw or in a guideline, depending on what, what it is. And don't forget that when we establish that bylaw, we'll go through another round of public consultation to establish it. So that there's, it's not like, once this is done, we're done, and you'll see in the next slides, you know, there's another round of consultate, round, rounds of consultation that will still happen in terms of developing that more detailed bylaw.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Can I just ask you to pull up the transportation slide? I think it's slide number, I lost it. It's the transportation network.
Do you remember which one it is?
Slide 22.
Slide 22, if you could, please.
So a couple of questions on this slide. So, you know, Counselor Ramirez excited because we've, we're finally getting the Berlow underpass, and so is Counselor Ramirez, but I'm looking at this, and I'm, and one of the core questions that's at the heart of this constrained piece of land, like one square kilometer, 43 hectares developable, it's constrained. And this looks theoretically like, okay, well, we're going to be able to have a, a bridge here, we're going to have a bridge there. How do we ensure, and where is it going to be defined, the priority of these? So for example, I'm seeing, you know, lots of us think that that north, south road is going to alleviate congestion going southbound to get into the GO station. It's not doing a whole lot for the people who are going northbound on Trafalgar. My question is, when and how are we determining the priority of these being built out? And are we reliant on our partners, use that in quotes, to fund these?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll attempt to take the first crack at this answer, and maybe my colleagues will can fill in the gaps. I do know that there is, there's a Midtown, a new Midtown EA study that is, that is going on right now, looking at transportation, and I believe some of these questions that you ask in terms of, okay, which project should go first and when, will be answered through, through a study, through that study. And I see Phoebe coming down to give me a hand here, which is very appreciated. So I'll pass it on to her.
Through you. So we have the Midtown Implementation Program that has the master plan at the level of the Midtown, but we also have the transportation master plan that's townwide as well. So in the layering of the variety of different transportation network that need to support this development in townwide, we have the transportation master plan to determine timing as well as the Midtown mass, uh, transportation plan. I don't, I don't want to call a master plan for now, just differentiate. And that will provide the timing and which infrastructure need to go first, second, and third, and is also dependent on the timing of the development that comes in. As a development comes in based on the market drivers, that there's different timings for the infrastructure. And the last piece is our partners. There is a regional partner, there are MetroLink partner, there are MTO partners, and we, we do have a pretty active advocacy perspective to, to be at the forefront, to talk to them about where we need them to be at the table, to partner with us, to ensure these critical infrastructure are put in at the right time and, and meet the needs of the development in the area.
So thank you for that. I just, I, I, I'm going to suggest that on October 29th and, and subsequent, this is at the heart of whether or not this community can be livable. And while I can appreciate that you're saying as the, the timing and the phasing of the applications coming in, there is huge challenges coming our way if, if the infrastructure is not there sooner rather than later. And that is one of the core messages that we spent the time talking about, you know, previously, is that, what incentive is there for people to get on transit and go to the GO station from the north if they're going to be caught in Trafalgar traffic? You know, will we really see the, the active transportation network for the first time in a long time being able to go from the south to the north, and by when? And, and how, how will people who are, you know, if Rose Corp starts to develop on the east side, how are those folks safely getting to the station? So at the heart of this, of livability, when you're talking about what could equate to 50,000 really people and jobs, and I get that, I, I'm incredibly appreciative that we're at a 2051 number that projects less than that right now, knowing what's going to come first, second, and third, and how we're going to phase that, I think is really important to the community. And then I would add to that, we need to revisit who's paying for what, because on the north-south, that doesn't seem to be on the region's capital plan. And, but we're talking about knocking down a, like, town hall and moving town hall, and there's a road, and so understanding at least what the region's going to do, and then what MTO is truly committed to, because I would concur with Counselor Dedek, I don't know that we can count on MetroLinks to come to the table on the east-bound platform and a couple of others.
Completely hearing you, you're completely correct. The phasing of the infrastructure is critical to make the, to ensure that Midtown is successful in terms of getting folks in and out. And it, I, what I previously mentioned is not, we're waiting for development. We definitely want to make sure the infrastructure is phased correctly before the people start to move in, so then they could actually move around. So you're completely correct, and we'll make sure we address that fully, more fully. And, and we do have quite a detailed phasing plan that we will take this OPA to create a detailed phasing plan, and looking at the financial contributions to make sure there's financial commitments as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I'm conscious that my council colleagues have been very patient. I do have two or three just key points, and the rest I'll send to you in writing, and I'll comp, copy my council colleagues. When we talk about 35% mix, I would put to you that that number is too low, and that when we look at vacancies and the investor community stepping back saying, no, that, that's not going to work for me anymore. Are we just being too conservative on that 35% and not foreshadowing really what, what is coming at us, which is, this generation is not going to tolerate living in a small box. When their partner comes along and, and a little one potentially comes along, they need space. And maybe they, they don't need, and we know they don't, none of us really need these big houses, but that mix needs to be greater on two and three. And I understand that a few municipalities have actually gone to the point of saying, in that mix, 10% of it must be three-bedroom. So separating it so that you can't wiggle out of that requirement. So I, I put that forward because I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't just do what others are doing. We should do what we really recognize as a core part of why people choose Oakville. They choose it because it's a family, community. And, and this old thought that professionals are just going to fill up Midtown, I mean, it's, it's antiquated. They're not. They're, they're staying there trying to use their laptop in the kitchen while their partner's on the couch, and they're all trying to just survive. My other is just around some shells and shoulds, and so for example, on public land, it says waste should be interior to the building. It should be shell. So there's some language in here that is really not talk, getting at the heart of livability for the folks who are going to live there. So I just want to call that out. I think you've worked really incredibly hard to get us where we are today, and I do really appreciate it. But there are some nuances in there that make people nervous that they aren't shells. And I do take the advice that we've been given that we've got to be careful what it puts on us, but things like that, that's, that's, it, it's a simple thing, but it makes a difference to their livability. So with that, I'm going to just look around and see any final questions from council? Not seeing, you have a few more slides to go.
Yes, I do. Thank you. And hopefully they're quick. Let me just bring up my notes. So as you may be aware, we released the draft OPA on September 26, and we, we circulated that to the province, which began their 90-day review period that, that they require. And so then we posted the OPA on our website the next day, and this evening, we have then presented that OPA to you. On October 29, council will have another opportunity to discuss the staff report that will be, that will be presented, that accompanies this, this official plan, that was prepared in support of this official plan amendment, and also hear from delegations from the public at that time. Then moving on in November or December, and it's a date we still have to, to nail down, well, we're going to host a public open house for members of the public to, again, come in, ask questions, learn more about the OPA, as we have done previously, but now doing it specifically on, on this version, as well as the CPPS in general, and answer questions related to that. Then in January of next year, after we receive comments on the OPA from the province, from agencies, from the public, from yourselves, we will return for a statutory public meeting at a PND council with a recommended OPA that we would hope to then, or an, an OPA that we would then hope to recommend for adoption at a following date in February. So I have here that, so there may be matters that are, that, you know, non-exempt matters of the OPA will be then forwarded to the, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for their approval once adopted by council. And the minister has 120 days to approve that OPA, albeit they do have the option to extend that time period at their discretion. And I will point out that that minister's decision would not be subject to appeal. Following adoption, the town will then proceed with the remaining phases of the Midtown Implementation Program, shown as phases five and eight here on this slide. So Phase Five includes some functional design work along, informed by the adopted OPA. It will inform development of the CPP bylaw. And again, as a reminder, there will be more public engagement opportunities for each one of these components listed in Phase Five, like the transportation plan that, that Phoebe mentioned, the stormwater plan, the area surfacing plan. All of these plans will each have their own public engagement opportunity, as well as the community permit, planning permit bylaw will also have engagement on it. So I think it's just to stress that there are lots of touchpoints coming forward where the public can, can get involved. In terms of developing the CPP bylaw, it, it needs to be adopted within 12 months of the OPA approval in order to protect the town from certain matters of that bylaw being appealed. So there is some, there is a little bit of a time crunch in terms of getting, getting working on that. So I think the intent is to get working on that very shortly after adoption of the OPA. And this finally concludes our presentation, and I thank you very much for your time and attention this evening. And of course, if there's any more lagging questions, we can certainly handle them now.
Counselor, are there any other questions from you? Well, never fails. Counselor Chisholm.
My apologies, I couldn't find the button. The special council meeting in October with the public, if we have a lot of delegations that night, is there a schedule carryover for that meeting? Because I would, I would suspect we're going to have a lot of delegations to that. So is there been any suggestion for a contingency meeting to continue on?
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I believe there's always the opportunity to extend that time if, if it's, if there's a significant number of public delegations. I'm sure that we could look to accommodate that for sure.
No, I just, just put it on, on, on the table that that might have to happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chisholm. I just wanted to clarify on the minister and the, the timeframe. We have already sent a draft to the minister, but we now are going to then have to send him it again, and the clock starts when he gets what we have, we have approved?
Through you, to you, Madam Chair, yes. So we have sent them a draft. They have 90 days. They want 90 days to review that and provide comment to us. have 90 days. They want 90 days to review that and provide comment to us, uh, during that 90 days before we can provide notice and go to a public statutory hearing. Once we get to a recommendation and should council, uh, make the decision to adopt, uh, an OPA, it then goes back to the minister for their approval. They are now our approval authority, whereas previously we might have had to send it up to Halton Region for their approval. Now with Halton Region having their planning authority removed, the province now becomes our approval authority. And this is a, this is a matter that they want to have, make that approval on.
Um, and that is separate from the TOC, uh, situation that we're, we're facing?
Yes, I believe that's, that's correct.
So i, is it possible for the minister to signal, what, do you have a sense that the minister would signal, uh, or provide his comments sooner, knowing that we've got other things going on in our community?
I have no indication of when we might be receiving comments from the province. At this time.
Okay. Um, and the OPA itself, uh, does not incorporate any, anything from the TOC because they haven't made a submission yet?
Um, to you, Madam Chair. Um, we have not incorporated the, the TOC into the OPA. The OPA sets what the towns, we believe the towns' vision for all of midtown would be, including the potential sites for a, for a TOC. Um, but we did not craft the OPA to accommodate, you know, whatever the TOC proposal might be as it comes forward.
So, uh, so in terms of that vision, um, it does incorporate, though, the buildout of all the lands and achieving, and if they max out at the FSI, um, the numbers that you've reported tonight, um, which would far and away exceed what the provincial requirements are?
So if I understand your question correctly, um, what we have proposed, what's been proposed in this OPA would exceed the minimum requirements in terms of, in terms of its buildout. Um, I would, I would, I would like to say, and this is, uh, sharing the optimism of, of some of my colleagues, is that by coming forward with this OPA and saying, hey, this is where the town is going, this is our direction in terms of how we would like to see midtown develop, that the province would take heed, potentially, and, and, and try and, uh, align maybe what they're proposing with what we're showing. Um, but again, I, we have no control over what the province might decide in that regard.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. All right. So, um, where's that note from? Yep, I need that. All right. So we've met today to, to review, uh, 3.1. Um, we don't have any confidential, uh, discussion items. I just want to give one last round looking. Are there any final comments from any of the counselors? Okay. Well, on behalf of, uh, council, thank you very much for all the time and for helping us, uh, take one more step on this midtown journey. I want to thank all the residents who, uh, bared with us over tonight. Um, and, uh, as we're coming up to Thanksgiving, I want to say I'm thankful for the, the talents that share their wisdom with us. And, um, I'm particularly thankful that we have residents like We Love Oakville, uh, who stand up for the future of Oakville. So, um, with that, we are adjourned. To receive, I'm told. Counselor Knoll. Okay. Only that? All right. All those in favor? Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Now we are adjourned.